circulated prior to the meeting and I'll call that to order. And is there any declaration of pecuniary interest with regards to the committee, the whole meeting today with county councilors? Okay, I don't hear anything. If one does arise, we will, we can declare at that time. We do have a delegation at 10 o'clock. We about six minutes to 10. We do have the notice of motion that's moved by Councilman Millen and second by Councilor Potter. And I'm going to pass it over to you, Councilman Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think the motion is fairly self-explanatory. I just want to say that any of these land acknowledgement statements are aimed at recognizing the traditional territories of indigenous peoples. And I think it's, I think it's time we did that. I think it shows that we recognize that we are meeting on their traditional territory. And I think in the, in the notion of reconciliation, it's time we did this. I'm simply looking for council's blessing to look into the options of what can be done and how. And we'll bring it back to council if this is endorsed. Thank you. So I would so move that motion.
Yeah, it's moved by you and it was seconded by Councilor Potter. And Councilor Potter, do you have anything to add to that as a second or?
I don't. I think Councilman Millen summed it up. We do have a statement of this nature at the beginning of all our council and committee meetings. And I think it's part of the, part of recognizing the, the original traditions of our country.
Okay, thank you for that. And I do remember back, Councilman Millen, when you were Warden, one of your events, I think it was in the big church, you did have a speaker to speak about indigenous. The, I think it was the, was it the soggy, was it the sogging or?
It was the folks from Six Nations of the Grand River that were there to describe about the Holman Track and the various nuances of land claims and, and traditional territory. So yeah, I, I've looked forward to doing something like this for quite a while. And I thought in light of the land claim settlement with Gray County just recently, I thought this was, the timing was right to, to do this.
Okay. Well, thanks for, for that. And any discussion from county councilors? Just I speak up if you wish to speak, if I don't see you on the screen or Madam Clerk can see you. Any discussion there? Anybody, Madam Clerk? No, nobody?
No, no, I can see.
All right. So that is put forward. Then if there's no other discussion, is there anybody opposed to that notice of motion? Okay, seeing none, then that's great.
Thank you, County Council.
Thank you, Councilman Millen. We'll look forward to the report coming back. So Madam Clerk, we're, we're four minutes ahead of time, which is unusual.
Our, our delegations are here as well as Brian Plumstead, our manager of tourism. So I think Brian is on point to introduce Christina and Gregory.
Okay. So he can do the preamble and let that time over pretty close to our time. So welcome, Brian. Oh, you got the, you got the, the whole hard app and everything, right? Oh, you're on mute there, Brian. You're on mute.
There we go. Thank you, Warden McQueen. I do have my cycling helmet and my hiking boots on this morning, just as we bring this plan to council, hopefully for the final time. Of course, we brought it to you back in February. It was a very stormy day. So I think I ended up presenting on behalf of our consultants. So we're really thrilled to have them with us today for the, for the final presentation. So Christine Valent and Greg Hanson, I think will be presenting. They've worked with this throughout this process from WSP. They've done an amazing job and I think we're very excited to bring it to you today. So I'll, I'll hand it over to Christine and Greg.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Before I get started, I believe Tara was going to share the presentation and then I would cue her for the next slide. Oh, perfect. I see it loading. Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. It's, it's great to join you today. As Brian mentioned, my name is Christina Valent. And I'm joined virtually, that is, by my colleague Greg Hanson. We are with WSP, the consulting team, along with Share the Road Cycling Coalition, and who have been working with the county to help complete the study. And we want to thank you for, for having us here today and really bring forward a project to council that we've been working on just over a year, I suppose. So next slide. So a quick overview of the project. The project was completed through three phases. The purpose of phase one was to do some background research and really understand the existing conditions in Gray County, including infrastructure that currently exists and that is on the ground right now. Existing initiatives and programs undertaken by the county and partners, existing policy port, and to review user patterns so we can develop an understanding of where people want to go into, want to go in the county and how they are getting there. And so the purpose of phase one was really to hone in on the context of cycling and trails within the county that would help lay out the county's future aspirations and guiding principles for the plan, including a vision statement and set up supportive objectives. Then in phase two, the intent was really to build upon those existing conditions and work through an iterative process to identify a network of recommended cycling routes and multi-use trails. And finally, in phase three, we developed a recommended implementation strategy, continuing recommendations for phasing, outreach, partnerships, potential funding, and some next steps. And really the outcomes of all three phases culminated in the county cycling and trails master plan, of which 23 recommendations are proposed. And as part of today's presentation, we are bringing forward six key recommendations, which we will highlight towards the end of the presentation. Next up, please. So there've been a few milestones since February of this year. We've identified February as our benchmark date, as a draft, draft master plan was presented to county council for information at that time. So following presentation to county council, there've been a number of milestones that bring us here today. In March, we had a public information center at the county's offices to present the draft plan and recommendations and to really initiate that 30-day public review period. And as part of that public review period, we developed a online platform through the county to collect public input and comments on the plan. We say 30-day review period quite loosely because this was extended to August really due to COVID. We wanted to make sure that we provided ample time for people to comment on the plan and not feel restricted by 30 days. You know, we understand that there were other pressing issues, adjustments, and really everyone just trying to settle into some sort of normalcy. So we wanted to respect people's time, but also their availability. And to make sure that there was enough time for everyone to comment on the plan. And during this time, county staff made a few presentations at the request of local municipalities and to their local municipal committees. And so since the end of the review period in August, we've been working with county staff to update the master plan and address all the comments received. Next slide, please. So to date, we've received written comments and feedback through discussions we had with residents at the March Public Information Center, as well as emails and online comments that have been pouring in. And so this slide really provides a summary of the types of comments we received on the draft master plan, in which they were reviewed, addressed, and incorporated into the revised master plan report. So we received comments from trail organizations such as Moose Trail Conservancy, as well as the Callapore Wilderness Trails Associations related to the level of focus on on road cycling compared to off-road trails in the master plan. We received comments on edits and corrections to facility types. We received comments on the importance of safety and education within the plan. We received comments on liability and we received comments regarding accessibility. Next slide. So all the comments were reviewed and discussed with the county steering committee. And really there are three key changes that we wanted to highlight today. First, a forward section has been added to the beginning of the report to really clarify the intent of the plan and to really hone in into that the plan is specifically focused on opportunities to improve conditions for on-road cycling, as well as off-road multi-use trails, non-motorized trails where cycling is permitted. And the forward also recognizes that there are extensive networks of already existing nature and wilderness trails within the county and that county staff will continue to work with its partners, which have strong community ties and grassroots foundations to advance future implementation and improvements of those off-road wilderness trails. And the last point is that the revised recommendation to establish two separate committees. So one for on-road cycling and the other for off-road trails. Both committees could help support implementation of the cycling and trails master plan. But it's recognized that the user type, interests, and concerns can really vary between the two groups. Next slide. Well, the network philosophy is really to focus on the next 10 years. And really to reiterate that, the plan is not intended to be prescriptive, but really meant to inform the future decision-making. So the important thing here is that the plan is really building upon the county's current 10-year capital plan. And so we worked with the county's transportation services staff to really understand what is in the capital plan for the next 10 years and try to align the, the phasing of some of those projects accordingly. So really, in essence, trying to leverage funding that has already been allocated for road projects in Gray County. And then in addition to some of those capital projects, looking at some quick wins, which are short gaps, which could help to close a gap between two important routes, as well as to invest in some of the county's cycling loop for tourism purposes. Perfect. So it is a very ambitious plan. As you can see, all the routes on the map. Granted, it is difficult to see at the scale, so I appreciate that. But the legend on the right-hand side shows all the facility types that are proposed to be included in the county's cycling and trails network, including facilities that are on the ground right now, so existing, as well as future proposed facilities. Next slide. And so, yeah, this map shows a zoomed-in look into the county's built-up areas. And the following slide will provide a bit more of a breakdown of the network in detail. Next slide. Wonderful. So 733 kilometers of post facilities. And really, if you look at the map, you'll see that most of these are on county roads and really form key north, south, and east-west linkages through the county. In some cases, these don't connect all the way through. So that's where member municipal roads have been identified and suggested to complete a linkage in the network. And typically, those linkages are the dotted blue lines on the map, which are proposed sign routes, since these roads have lower traffic volumes. So again, it is an ambitious plan. And we've broken out the facility types to the right side. And really, a majority of the network is made up of paved shoulders and sign routes. Though this includes nearly 237 kilometers of paved shoulders and 424 kilometers of signed routes. Next slide. And so to reiterate, the, the network approach is really to focus on the next 10 years. And so out of the total network, a large portion of this is phased into the short term. So 374 kilometers in the short term are proposed to be implemented and another five of 300, pardon me, 359 kilometers in the long term. A vast majority of the kilometers in the short term are paved shoulders, so 120 kilometers, followed by sign routes, just 249 kilometers. And really, it's recommended that the phasing be reviewed on an annual basis in conjunction with the county's capital plans and hopefully member municipality plans to help align projects and achieve some cost savings. Thank you. So this map illustrates the proposed phasing plan for routes on the county's cycling and trails network. So there are a few different line colors illustrated on the map. The red lines represent projects that currently align with the county's 10-year short-term capital plan. Orange lines represent projects, additional projects that have been identified in the short term that are not captured or fall on a road within the county's current capital plan. So these projects would require additional funding to implement. And purple lines are routes beyond the first 10 years, so really that long-term horizon. Next slide, please. And similarly, this map illustrates the, the routes within the built-up area. So just a zoomed-in look. Next slide. So what is the cost? An estimated 3.5 million for short-term projects over 10 years. A vast majority of this, 3.1 million, is for projects that currently align with the county's current capital plan for the short term. So really looking at an additional 400,000 for projects that have not been budgeted yet. You know, it's recommended that the county explore external funding sources to help implement these routes. And there are a number of existing funding sources that could be explored. An example of one would be the Federal Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. Some really exciting news that came out in August of this year. The federal government released a new temporary COVID-19 resilient stream through the infrastructure program with over $3 billion in funding. So under the stream, projects could be eligible for a federal cost share of an 80/20 split, up to 20, pardon me, up to 80% for provinces and municipalities and 20% federal. We're still waiting on the application to be released and some new information, but news of the funding has been released. And really, the stream is intended to fund short-term projects that can be implemented by the end of 2021. And eligible projects under the COVID-19 resilient stream do include active transportation infrastructure, such as trails, footbridges, bike lanes, and multi-use paths. So that's just one example of a funding source that could be explored to help implementation of short-term projects. Thank you. So supporting implementation, really beyond infrastructure, the, the plan contains a number of recommendations and information to guide implementation, but we pulled some key pieces to focus on here. So as noted earlier, establishing two committees, one for on-road cycling and the other for off-road trails. The committees could include representation from member municipalities as well as the county. And really, this gives an opportunity for the committees to work directly with stakeholders and other partners to ensure ongoing implementation of the plan. It also provides a good, it also provides a forum for discussion to help prioritize improvements and potentially leverage other partnerships in the future. Collaboration and partnerships are essential, especially when you look at the network across the county. It is important that the county continue to work with its member municipalities, but also other partners and agencies like the Public Health Unit, school boards, OBP, local businesses, trail groups, and other advocacy groups to help implementation for other components of the plan. And really funding, looking at those other options to secure funding to help some more, help support implementation of the plan. Next slide. So in total, the plan contains 23 recommendations and we are bringing forward six recommendations, which Brian will outline in the following slide. And we really hope that this plan can be used to guide decision-making for active transportation, cycling, and trails in the county for the next 10 years. And then in terms of some next steps, we've outlined four here. So the first to formally adopt the Cycling and Trails Master Plan as a guiding policy document. The second, for county staff to identify projects in their annual review, annual budget review process. The third, to continue to engage in consultation and engagement with member municipalities, stakeholders, and residents. And the fourth really being to reach out to key stakeholders to formalize partnerships and facilitate implementation. And I think at this point, I will pass it over to Brian to provide an overview of the six recommendations we are bringing forward today.
Well, thanks, Christina, and for an informative presentation. And Brian, do you wish to?
Brian, I think you're muted again.
Thank you. Warden McQueen. I'm not sure at this point if we need to get the report on the table. I'm certainly happy to run through it, but there were recommendations for county council to, to approve the plan. So maybe I'll ask. Yes, Heather, could you weigh in on that?
So the, the, Brian's report is the first one up under items for discussion. So we, if the delegation is, is finished, then we have just the consent and then we can go right to Brian's report, which includes a recommendation for council to consider.
Well, if you can hang in there till we go through the consent, then we can come back to this report. And if there's questions, I guess, Madam, Madam Clerk, we'll, we'll keep the questions at that time for this presentation. Do we want to?
We can open it up now for questions to our delegation from council on the, the plan and just understanding that Mr. Plumstead will also be speaking to the plan shortly.
Okay. So well, thank you for that, Madam Clerk, and for Christina and Brian. Are there any questions from county councilors? I can't see, because right now it's on the screen. Oh, there we are. Is there any questions to the presenters of this plan?
So I see Counselor Sellever.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Sellever.
Okay, I have to unmute myself. Oh, am I?
Okay. I can hear you.
Very good. Okay. So on the plan, I noticed that a lot of the cycling routes are on county roads. Now, as, as the area develops and these become major arteries, then would it not be better to, you know, try to put future roads? Or has anybody done that on a future bicycle lanes on less traveled roads? Or are we in the future going to actually have to separate the bike lanes from the traffic in some manner?
Oh, Brian or Christina?
Well, I wonder even if Pat Hoyt, this might be a better question for Director of Transportation Services to handle.
Okay, Pat, we'll put you in hot seat.
Yeah, I, I think during our, during the, can you hear me? All right? Yeah, yeah. During the consultation, that, that was brought up kind of from both angles, that, you know, the county routes are a little more direct. If you're trying to get from one place to other, you're probably going to want to take the most direct route. And then some of the member municipalities also indicated that maybe they didn't want a lot of cyclists on the road. It doesn't mean they're not going to be there. But I think, I think we kind of looked for different, different connectivity, which is why the county roads seem to suit a lot of the time. And we were paving our shoulders anyway. So I think that's kind of one of the things we got out of, out of the plan. I think an important thing just to mention about the plan. And as I said, we've been paving our shoulders anyway. But a big issue with us was, we can't necessarily pave our shoulders to the widening that Book 18, the cycling book, would recommend. So one thing that transportation was really hoping to get out of this plan was, tell us the roads where we're just going to pave, say, a partially paved shoulder of half a meter, where we don't have to build a big platform widening, those big ticket jobs that cost millions and millions and millions of dollars. So I think that's one thing we got out of the plan. Some roads, we know that we can pave quite easily because the shoulder is there. Other roads where it isn't, we can't. So I think that's a big thing that we got of the plan that we didn't really have before. There is, there is roads on there that we basically said, we will just be paving the minimum. It won't be a cycling route. It won't be a sign route. And that's kind of where, where we've got some clarity now, if it's adopted, on, on where our cycling routes are going to be and what kind of infrastructure we should build.
Okay, thank you for that. Or whoever, is that, do you have a follow-up to that from that answer?
I, I, that's, that explains a good bit. I just have another question, if I may, Mr. Warden. To what degree was there coordination with connectivity with our surrounding municipalities? I know a lot of the cyclists here, they go for 80 or 90 kilometer rides and end up crossing in the simple county or even Dufferin. And to what degree is our plan coordinated with their plans?
What was that, Christina or Brian's?
Yeah, I can, I can answer to that. Thank you. That, that's a great question. I think, you know, when people are out and about biking, jurisdiction doesn't really matter to them. They want to make sure that they can get from point A to point B. So that is certainly something we, we looked at and really discussed with people at the open houses and collected input on, online. So I would say we, we wanted to understand where people were going so we can make those connections, but also look at planning documents from surrounding municipalities and surrounding counties to understand what they have planned for as part of their active transportation and their cycling networks to ensure that we can make those connections in the plan as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
I could just, a specific example is the, the Blue Mountain to Collingwood connection. We, we see that as a super important project. Gray County's been very supportive all the way through and we're hoping that'll move forward, but certainly that was one of the main connections we looked at as a specific example of what Christina just shared.
Thank you.
Yeah, a few years ago, there was a Centurion race or those races, which sort of encompassed Gray County and Simpco County with a number of roads and that. So, okay, thank you. I think Counselor Potter, did you have an indication you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. And funny, you should mention Centurion. I was involved with that. I worked for the town at the time, Brian will remember. And it was, the, one of the reasons for doing it was that it was a great investment because we saw a great return on it. And that was, that's really the basis of my question. Do we have any numbers or any idea of how many people are using the roads now for cycling? And how many more we might see if we undertake this process? Because when we go to the community, yes, we all understand the healthy communities' benefits, the social and cultural benefits and so on. But if we're looking at how do we phase this in, how do we pay for it over time? We have to get down to the nuts and bolts of, of what's the return on investment? So what, what might we see? What do we see now? What might we see in the future? What is the potential for a return of, of, on our financial investment over the long term?
Right.
Well, I could certainly handle that, Counselor Potter. Thank you for that. That's a great question. And we have been doing some, some actual cycling counts. And most of that's been focused in the, the town of the Blue Mountains. We're just getting the data and putting that all together. But we were outgathering quite a bit of data this summer and in past summers. And before we get that, another tool we use is Strava. You might be familiar with, that's a very popular cycling app that people use. It tends to favor more It tends to favor more hardcore cyclists. But what that has told us is that we've seen. Back when there was Centurion, we'd see a real peak in September. With just all the activity around Centurion, especially in the Blue Mountains. Now we're seeing more of a level pattern of cyclists over the whole year. And this year, we definitely see more local cyclists as opposed to visitors. So that's been an interesting. So to answer your question, we have some decent data tools, but my hope is as we go forward. We'll be gathering more data across Gray County, sharing that better understanding. How many cyclists there are, where they're from, and be able to answer more of the economic impact. That those, those have on our local economy.
And those visitors have just became permanent residents.
Good point. I think we're seeing a lot of that. Yes, they, they've moved up. They're now staying here and, and outriding the roads as well.
Okay, any follow-up to that councillor Potter?
Uh, yes, and, and I think we should note that, that cycling is kind of a pandemic-proof. Activity, so it's something people can still do. As long as they, they distant when they, when they stop for drinks and so on. But I think the economic benefits, when we did our economic development strategy, one of the things we, we realized was that cycling has huge benefits. Uh, and a huge payback over time if you do it right. So. I, I think it's worth doing. I think the wayfinding strategy is very important here. Uh, I think we're lacking that even along the Georgian Trail. I noticed that. There's no sign to tell anybody that there's a trail right there. And so I see people. And, and children riding on Highway twenty seven, twenty-six when there is a, a perfectly good bike trail. Thirty or forty meters away from them. So it'll be good to see that happen. So. Thank you for the report and I look forward to seeing this happen over the next ten or twelve years.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Potter. Madam Clerk, is there anybody else wish to speak?
I see councillor Mackie's hand.
Yeah, go ahead councillor Mackie.
Uh, thank you, Warden, and thanks Brian for the, the report. Just a question regards to, I certainly agree with the, the county having the, the bike lanes. You know, moving forward, at least on a number of the county roads. And it's an ideal spot for, for cyclists, you know, maintain that safety barrier. What's the expectation going to be for some of the secondary routes? Because, you know, I know the one going through our municipality is a tar and chip road. And some of the, the cyclists with those fancy road bikes may not like a tar and chip road compared to getting off the asphalt. So what are the expectations for the lower tier municipalities as far as? You know, the type of road that they're constructing and will the lower tiers have the final say in whether it's a designated route? Thank you.
So Christina, did you have some feedback from the lower municipalities or Brian?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. That's a great question. I guess I'll start with the, the last question. Yeah, the municipalities would have the. The, the final say of routes designated on their member municipal roads. I know it's our hope that municipalities will work with the county in the future as opportunities come up to implement. Routes and facilities on the roads. If and when appropriate, and really that the master plan be used as a guiding document. When those opportunities come up. We do have some roads that are tar and chip on the network because we did receive some comments for a number of residents that. They are interested in biking on these roads because they are often lower volume and. They prefer to cycle on the roads with their children and their families. So we do acknowledge that there are some roads that are tar and chip and we're not recommending that. Any improvements be made to these roads. It's really just acknowledging that there is already interest for cycling on these roads. Brian, I'm not sure if you wanted. To add anything else.
I think you summed it up Christina. Maybe I could just extend that and say there's actually even a few stretches of gravel road that are on the network. So. Gravel roads are certainly part of the network and there is no expectation to upgrade those. In fact, gravel riding is starting to become more and more popular. So I think we're starting to see more and more cyclists on gravel roads. Which would certainly obviously put them on municipal roads.
Okay, and I guess back to you councillor Mackie is. Maybe we just give the county those, those lower tier roads.
I have no, uh. No disagreement with that. I just, you know, I, I just know, you know, County Road Forty, for example, going, cutting, cutting across from. Blue Mountains and through Gray Highlands, you know, to Chasworth, has the bike lane on it and it's perfect. But once you get off onto some of the arterial roads, uh, they're, they're not as wide and, you know, I certainly have some safety concerns. If we're going to have a large volume of, of cyclists, because we have lots of logging trucks and. Agricultural vehicles on those secondary roads. So anyways, just. Just some concerns. And we're having trouble keeping our bridges open. So I'd really like to see like councillor Potter said, what's the actual cost going to be for this? Thanks.
So maybe those roads where you gotta close for vehicle or traffic on your bridges will still carry bicycles, Mr. Mackie. All right, moving on. Madam Clerk, is there anybody else wish to?
Councillor Desai and councillor Millen.
Okay, go ahead councillor Desai and councillor Millen.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I just want some clarity. So from. My, my question was similar to councillor Mackie and the clarity I'm seeking, Mr. Warden is. What I've heard is that if lower tiers are unhappy with a particular road being on that route. We can get in touch with the county and have that road changed. Is that? I wanted to confirm that. And the second was on handling of liability. Will, will it be, what will liability rest with the? Jurisdiction of whoever has the road or will it be with the county because the county is promoting the cycling? Master planet or that map? And the other question I had was with regards to the, the working group for the, for the master plan. Why do we need a working group? Can we not, can adherence to the plan not be done through staff bringing? Reports to either county council or to the committee of the hall. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. You got good, three good questions there. Christina or Brian, or maybe that one's, first one's back to Pat with regards to. Alternate routes if they do not want it. Who would like to take that, that one on first? Silences.
Well, maybe, I think if Pat could take that, that's. As we go forward in this plan, it's a very complex plan. There's a lot of pieces. So I think if there are specific roads that create a problem, I, I believe we're open to that discussion, but I, I think that would. Would certainly be, if Pat could comment further on that.
Okay, Mr.
Okay, through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, the one, the one thing I would say is. There's liability with every road that every jurisdiction owns. So. You know, we're, we're doing our best to, to maintain the road in its proper condition. You know, apply the minimum maintenance standards and all that stuff. But whether it's highlighted on a plan or not. You know, generally the municipality is aware or ought to have been aware. Little lawyer speak, there's other lawyers speak better than me, but. You know, the, the cyclists are there. We had a big discussion during our, during our consultation about Pretty River Parkway. You know, people concerned that we don't really want cyclists to go there. You know, it's kinda hilly and, and the road is tar and chip and, but that's why they're there, right? So, uh, you know, it's, it's a hard question to get an answer to because we can't stop them from going where they wanna go. They love those routes that, you know, they're up and down the hills and around the curves and there's beautiful trees everywhere near the edge of the road and that type of thing, but. I think as a municipality with the county, at least, we're trying to do the best that we can. To make it safe for, for all users, you know, the guy with his kids and, and the cyclist spandex types, but. That's kinda where we're at. You know, if there is a municipality totally opposed to, to, to cyclists using a route. I guess that would be something we could modify the plan, but, but in some other ways. They have a right to use it, their vehicle, like everyone else under the Highway Traffic Act and. It's kinda tough to, to fight them on that if they wanna be there.
Well, just following up with that, Pat, and so basically they're there anyway. So what you're saying is embrace it. And try to reduce your liability as best you can. Is that through signage or through? The best thing you can do as far as maintenance in that road?
Yeah, I mean, a signage at least, you can kind of adhere to book eighteen and, and it will tell the motorist that there's cyclists there, because we know they're there. So that, that was kind of, you know, I, I find there's a lot of signage in this plan, which, which I argued with Greg and Christina about quite a bit. Just because there's so much signage, but really that, that is to, to tell motorists that there's cyclists in the area. So. It will hopefully protect us from some liability. Again, there's the whole argument that we had about cyclists and liability aside from that, but. I think that's kind of the main purpose of it and to, and to kinda help the cyclists as well, so they know where they're going.
Right. So liability, I, I know we have our, our legal representative here. Does somebody wanna take on or speak to that at all or other than you, Pat, is there anybody else that would like to touch that one?
I, I could answer that other question about, about the working group.
Okay, go ahead.
I was sort of opposed to this at first too.
Are you back? Where'd you go there? Pat, you're, did you fall off the desk?
He's frozen. Because I, I don't really wanna be on another working group. Oh, sorry. Can anyone hear me? I'm just kinda frozen here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear that? How much of that did you lose? Did you hear any of it?
We just said you were first opposed to it and then you were gone.
Okay, yes. So I've kind of been talking with Christine and Greg over time and the planning folks. You kinda realize that it gives cyclists a focused place to send their message to us. As opposed to now where you just get, you know, calls from cyclists from all over the place, asking for things. You don't know if they're speaking on behalf of anybody or if it's just some guy on a route that he likes to ride. So I think that the strength of the working group is, it's a place to take their ideas and their requests, which we never really had before. So I'd much rather kind of deal with, with a group that, that has an agenda that. That we know what they want, rather than just random requests coming in from random bike riders, right? So I think that's the strength of the working group. Lo, there is a good plan here that's our basis of a start. It's gonna change over time. It'll be a living document too. So. That's kinda to answer councillor Desai's working group question, from my point of view, anyway.
Okay, thank you. And Randy?
If I can just add a bit further to that and, and yeah, Pat's, that's exactly identified why we think the working groups are important. Provides that opportunity to connect with cycling groups, other stakeholders, trail organizations. To get their direct feedback on a regular basis. It's something we also identified through the county's recreational trails master plan. Where we identified regular engagement with trail user groups to identify improvements, form partnerships. And therefore, you know, the trail working group will provide that forum for these discussions to occur. So. So that's why we're, we're supportive of or recommending that we move forward with working groups.
Okay, thank you for that. So Michael, I see you're, you popped up. Were you going to speak to, to the liability? Can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Yeah, it's a little wire needs to be plugged in.
All right, there we go. I actually unplugged, strangely enough. Only to, if council had specific questions. I could address them, but otherwise I think Pat's spoken very well on the issue of liability and who's responsible for which roads.
Thank you for that. And councillor Desai, that, that answer all your que, your questions that you asked?
I do have a subsequent, Mr. Warden.
Okay, make it quick, please. Go ahead.
Thank you. So again, with regards to the liability. What I've heard was that it would, the liability would rest with the individual municipalities. And then that really, we, we can't do much in terms of. Controlling bikes on cer, on any road because they are a vehicle. But my question again, coming back to liability, is, is there an increased obligation on lower tier municipalities? It, because the, you know, the, the county is endorsing or advertising a, a particular road as a cycling road. So does that lead to an increased obligation or increased liability for the lower tier municipality? Thank you.
I don't know. Kevin, if you're on the line, Kevin Whuppler, but I know that, I don't know if you have any comment with regards to insurance. I'm sure you do what the, do with the providers on that. I don't know if you have any comments there.
I guess just if, if a claim can be addressed to a municipality that, because we're deemed to be. Deep pockets that those will come forward. So. And it's been, you know, joint and several, that's been the issue for many years. If you can find one percent liability. Or whatever, that we will receive notices of claims.
Okay, thanks Kevin. Councillor Desai, it sounds like it doesn't go away.
No further questions, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Millen?
Our question's been answered. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any other comments there?
Uh, no, sir.
Just a quick one for me. E-bikes and off-road vehicles. I know that there's changes from the province. The interaction of that unless the municipality passes a bylaw that controls off-road vehicles. What, how's the interaction happening with that, Christine? Have you spoken to that or, or, or Brian in the sense that? E-bikes are, you know, are probably, could be becoming popular as well as the off-road vehicles. Any comments there?
So the master plan does provide some information on e-bikes and different types of e-bikes, but it's recognized through the province's. E-pilot program that it's up to individual municipalities to establish bylaws and really provide provisions in terms of. Where they are permitted and not permitted. So beyond the province's recommendations, we've really aligned with that and kept consistent with that information. Brian, I'm not sure if you have anything else to add or any information.
Not really, just that that is probably something that the working group would, would start working with, I think, looking at e-bikes and. Maybe providing some guidance to Gray County, but also to the member municipalities.
And I know the, the big caption is we share the road, right? Share the road. Okay, um, seeing as. Go ahead.
I, I wonder if, I think CEO Windgrove wanted to provide some comments. And I just will note that councillor Columbus has joined us as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say welcome, Mayor Columbus, to our meeting. And thank you for that, Madam Clerk. And Madam CEO.
Just two really quick comments if I could, Mr. Warden. With regard to the working group. From, you know, trying to put myself in council shoes. I think what the working group offers us as staff is access to. A disparity of, of opinion and experience that's within the cycling community. And allows us to provide the best information back to council and, and to be able to. Tell you with some confidence where that information is coming from and, and whose perspectives are being represented. So hopefully that will help us to make better recommendations in the future. With regard to liability. One of the things that we've been working hard to try and do, especially with our, with our new insurers Marsh. Is to work with them on the risk and liability side of things. To ensure that we are talking to them about initiatives as. We look at, you know, changing service levels or, or, you know, doing something different with the services that we provide. And getting their advice and guidance on considerations to try and mitigate risk. So. I just wanted to provide that to council that we're not working in isolation. We really are trying to. Work, work closely to, with, together with our insurers and the, and the experts that they have on their team. So that we can, you know, make sure that we've, we've done all we can to try and make things safe for everyone.
Part of that due diligence that we've been driven in our minds of what we have to do, right? Okay, um, seeing there's no other questions at this time for this, we'll, we'll move on to our consent agenda. And are there any of those items that wish to be pulled by county council for further discussion later on in the meeting? If there isn't, I have a motion moved by councillor Keeveney and councillor Woodbury to support the consent agenda. I just lost, sorry, go ahead. Am I speaking here?
Mr. Warden.
Go ahead councillor Silver.
I'd like to pull item B, which is correspondence from municipality of Meaford on county road, this management program.
Okay. All right, are there any other, one last call, are there any other items which to be pulled? Okay, seeing none, like I mentioned, Counselor Keveney and Counselor Woodbury has supported the, moving a second in the consent agenda. Is there anybody opposed to that? All right, that is carried. So that item will come back later on in the agenda that has been pulled. So moving on to the first report then, which regards to the cycling and trails master plan. And did you want to speak to it further? Ryan?
Well, I did have a few comments to run through, mostly with respect to the recommendations that are in the backend of the report. So is the appropriate time?
I do have a mover and a seconder for the report, and that's moved by Counselor O'Leary and Counselor Hicks. So it is officially on the floor. And do you want to speak to those six priorities now then, Brian?
Certainly, I will do that. And also just to thank our steering committee that guided this whole plan through, which of course was Pat Hoy, Randy Schertz, myself, and also Jason Whapler from the Grey Bruce Health Unit, as well as many staff across Gray County. Huge plan, it's 120 pages, there's 23 recommendations. So staff have really looked and said, what are, what are sort of the top six that we think are important to focus on? And we wanted to bring those to council for their attention. And two of those is really guiding our infrastructure as we move forward. The maps 2A and B, which define the network, and then maps 3A and C that define the phasing. So we wanted to, to highlight those as important recommendations, that, that we accept those. And that those form the basis for our, our planning and our, our budget work going forward. And as Christina pointed out, the majority of that is paved shoulder work that would be done by the county. And then signage that would be shared between the county and the municipalities. Secondly, as a wayfinding strategy recommendation, and as Counselor Potter highlighted, we think this is really important to look at what are the top priorities for signing routes, and certainly not the whole 733 kilometers would be signed immediately. Sort of to Pat's point, we want to prior- prioritize that, I think, really start with our busiest routes, where there's a lot of cyclists on the roads. And can get those signed. And then this will set that priority. Risk management strategies, I think we spent a lot of time talking about that, that is super important. And perhaps that's something that we could even workshop with the member municipalities. Is really coming together to better understand what that means, so we're all on the same page. And we feel comfortable as we move forward in that. So that, that might be something the working group could help set up. But could be done with our member municipalities. And then the two working groups, which is another huge recommendation. And I, I think our CEO really outlined the benefits of that, what that brings, has did, did Pat and Randy. And, and maybe I'll just say that was one of the big changes, we were mostly cycling focused. And, and we said, actually, trails are really important in Gray County. I think that's even been highlighted by what we've seen happening on our outdoor spaces through COVID over the summer. Just so much more traffic. We are almost in crisis situations, I think, on some of our trail areas. Due, due to demand and heavy traffic. So by working together, can we figure out how, how better to mitigate some of those issues that we have? And then finally, funding, and looking at funding, and as Christina mentioned, there is a funding source right now that looks very promising. So we're certainly, as soon as the details are announced, we'd like to move forward with some funding applications to help implement this plan. So I think that is really the, the quick overview of the recommendations. And if there's, there's any further questions, that we certainly could address those.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Just before I go to questions, just on funding, can that come from multi streams? So we can apply for different opportunities if they arise?
Absolutely. Yes, I think wherever possible to stack, that we certainly would. I think I can say we do have $80,000 in our capital for tourism and cycling signage in 2021. So that's been approved. And notionally, I think we've, we felt probably about half of that would go to cycling and half would go to, to more tourism signage. But that is certainly a start that we could leverage from.
I'm just thinking with COVID-19 on, it's, it's really getting, it's really encouraging for people to be outdoors and doing things. So who knows what other kind of funding may be aspire to come forward. So, okay. Questions from county council? This is on the floor. Let's move a second, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And through you to Brian. Brian, what's the process going to be? I mean, I, you talk about we'd be approving the mapping today. So is that the mapping with all the R2O routes? Because I don't feel comfortable, you know, speaking for the township of Chatsworth Council in regards to, you know, a section going through our municipality. I would like that decision to be made at our council table. So when, when and how would that happen? Are you planning on going out to the lower tier municipalities that are affected by this, or could potentially be affected by this? And getting their blessing? Ryan?
Well, maybe I'll start the question that, and maybe Christine and even Pat could jump in. We've really had a very comprehensive engagement process throughout this plan. So we've met several times with municipal staff and specifically with roads staff. So, so I would say at the moment, we feel this is, is, is the best plan that we can bring to the table. Having said that, certainly if there are specific concerns with specific roads. I, I think we, we could look at that. I know certainly there was some concern. I know on maybe the road that you're referring to that goes by Moby Valley and was truck traffic. So there's those kinds of issues, but rather than not approving the plan. I, I think I would ask council to approve the plan. And certainly if there are specific roads that are issues, we, we can work, work through those with the local municipalities.
Go ahead, Scott. I, I guess I just wondered, Brian, what is that process for working it through? I certainly heard some concerns, you know, from our members of council. And I just not, I wouldn't want the decision for that route to be made today without going to our council table.
Well, I'm, maybe I'll, I'll ask Pat and Randy to, to, to jump in as well. We, we had talked about certainly reaching out to the, the member municipalities. Well, once this is passed, to start getting down into details and how this all works, setting priorities. So that was, I think we had felt that would be one of our first steps. But maybe I'll ask Pat and Randy if they weigh in on that as well, or even Christina.
Yeah, just add some thoughts. You know, I think the intent is obviously, we have to start somewhere. And, and we think that the maps, as Brian indicated through our consultations, is, is the best that we can come up with at this stage. Recognizing though, that this is, you know, these, the cycling routes are a guide for future design and implementation. These will be used as our document to guide some of our future decisions. As we bring forward capital plans and budgets to implement. Brian indicated, you know, I think this is also will be a living document as we go, as we have some further discussions with our working groups. There will be no doubt tweaks, I think, made to this, the, the cycling network as we go, because things change. So we want to make sure we're able to adapt to those changes. So, so to me, I think it's a, it's a guiding document. It's, it's a, it's a document that, based on the information that we have at this stage. We think it's the best that we've come up with. But it's likely to change. And, and we can have those discussions through further discussions of the working group or through our local municipal contacts and groups and those changes as we go. For now, you know, our recommendation is, this is, this is what we're recommending to be used to guide some of those future discussions.
Thanks, Randy. Madam CEO, do you have any comments here?
Just as follow-up, and I think Randy has covered it well, is that I, I, I don't, I don't think we're committing anybody to anything specific today, other than here's a, here's an idea of what an infrastructure could look like, that's comprehensive, that meets the needs of a really broad sector of the, of the population who wants to use this, these outdoor spaces in a lot of different ways. So here's a vision for the future. And we'll work away at building up this infrastructure and, and making it more useful to the people who want to use it, how they want to use it, as our resources allow us to. But I, I don't, I don't think that we're, we're, I hope that we don't, no one feels like we're tying their hands today with, with anything very specific as far as investment that you might have to make, or, or anything. I don't think that was the intent of this. Is that fair, Randy and Brian? Yes, okay.
So just before I go back to Scott, I just noticed on the presentation on map 2A, it says preferred cycle and trails network. And then on three, it says proposed phasing. So are those soft enough words to give Counselor Mackey comfort until, like, just, they're preferred and proposed. But it's not saying this must be. Is that, is that a fair statement to anyone? Because it does sort of say those. And Scott, I'm, I'm going back to you, others can think about that. I just noticed that on the maps. Go ahead, Scott.
No, I, I'm comfortable with the comments made by, by Kim and, and Randy and Brian, that we're not, not committed at this point. I just didn't feel that I could commit our municipality when, you know, the route hasn't even appeared on our, our council table that I can remember, you know, as, so anyways, I'm happy that we're not committed right now. And there'll be an opportunity if, for further dialogue in regards to the routes. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Counselor Mackey. And this is being recorded, so you, you can play it back. Any other comments?
That's why I said we're not committed.
Mr. Warden, I have Counselors Potter and Soever.
Okay, so go ahead, Counselor Potter.
Thank you. Just returning to wayfinding. I think Pat mentioned that we, we have enough signs on the side of the roads already. It's important to note that if you brand, if the signs are branded, I'm not going to tell Brian anything he doesn't know. But if it's, if the signs are branded, people look for them. So they will stand out from all the other signs, if you're a cyclist looking to know which way to turn next. But I wondered, one of the ways to cut down on signs nowadays is to use apps. So somebody can pull out their phone and cyclists do carry their phones. And, and be able to punch in their coordinates and, and know where they are. So Brian, I wonder if you could, if, if there's anything like that, or am I jumping too far ahead?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Potter. Absolutely, apps are being used. And I think that might be a great thing for the working group to jump in and say, what, you know, what are some of the best platforms and how can we leverage technology, certainly? And to your point about the signage, yes, there, there are the, the green and white provincial signs, which we are looking at using, but we are also looking at the R2O7 kind of blue and white signage that is more branded. And is more of a sort of a tourism touring type of sign that people would stand out and direct people. And that would be driving into communities and attractions, as well as just providing direction on the road or, or for commuters. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Just, well, Brian, Brian mentioned it, that one of the reasons to have a working group is to keep up with this stuff. Keep up with the changing patterns, because cyclists are like water, they will follow whatever route becomes available or attractive to them. So just because something's on the map today doesn't mean it'll be a cycling route tomorrow. So I think we have to have people who keep tabs on this stuff, keep tabs on the changing technology and so on. And that's what a working group can do.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Potter. Counselor, whoever.
Yes, just following up on Mr. Mackey's concerns. I agree that, you know, although the staffs have worked together with the local municipal staffs. It has not passed the council chambers. And so perhaps we should be asking as part of this resolution that the local municipalities endorse this plan. So that, you know, when signage does go up, that directs people onto municipal roads. Just that it, that it has had the approval of council, just from a strictly governance point of view. Is that, you know, we, we are committing the local councils to something. It's not substantial maybe, but it, it is moving the traffic around. And I just think it'd be a good idea to ask that, you know, the local councils do endorse this plan.
Are you looking to an amending motion to this, to the original motion?
Yes.
Okay, so can you reword that just for the clerk?
Okay, just to, to say in that, the, the county of Gray asks that this plan be submitted to the lower tier councils for endorsement.
Okay, do I have a seconder for that? Counselor Mackey? Madam Clerk, any clarity on the, on the amending motion?
No, I think Counselor Soever captured it quite well, that the plan to be circulated to the, to the local municipalities for endorsement. And so when we vote, we're voting on the amendment.
Okay, discussion on the amendment. Please speak up if I can't see you. Any further discussion? Wow, okay. Seeing there's no discussion, anybody opposed to the amending motion? I would say that's carried, Madam Clerk. So now we have the motion on the floor with the amendment included. Any further discussion on the motion? Guess a quick question I have is, if it's going from a county road to a, a lower tier road. Is there funding for shoulder widening or improvements to those roads? And I'm looking at maybe Brian or Krista, in a sense of improving or keeping the continuity. If that was so desired. Does anybody have an answer for that?
I'm thinking that would be a hard no. Just guessing.
Well, I know a few years back, we, we were looking at trying to apply for, for some funding and we weren't successful. But I just didn't know if there was something coming out on that. So anyway, something to think about.
I'd like to, I'd like to point out to Counselor Milton, he's not the Brian you meant when you said Brian.
I was looking at, at Mr. Plumstead, but I, I appreciate Counselor Milton's comments as well.
I do see Counselor Soever's hand.
Okay, Counselor Soever.
I, I'd just like to make note that eventually the money comes from, whether it comes from county taxes or municipal taxes. It's all coming out of the same taxpayer's wallet. So I, I don't know that, that really helps. Except if it comes from the county, of course, we're, we're happy to share more.
Okay, well, we'll stay focused here. Okay.
Counselor Gamble?
Go ahead, Counselor Gamble.
I, I, I'm just asking, this is a question for myself, more or less. Is there provincial dollars involved in this? Because, I mean, we all know that there's a lot of bikers that are coming from cities to bike here. And I don't blame them and we, we will entertain them. But I'm just curious. Is there other money other than our own Gray County money involved?
Hey Krista, or, or Mr. Plumstead? Sorry, Christina?
We did receive through the Ontario Municipal Commuter Cycling Program, significant funds. I think it was around $530,000 towards pay shoulders to help pay for this plan. We purchased some bicycle counters. So yes, that, there was some provincial funding. And maybe that's a question also for Pat, just going forward within the cap, county's capital. If, is there some provincial assistance that, that comes to help pay for pay shoulders?
Okay, Mr. Hoy.
Through you, Mr. Warren. Yeah, I haven't seen anything out really since, since the commuter cycling grant. But we're always looking for those opportunities. And it seems like it's a priori. We'll see how much of a priority is the next couple of years, but seems like it's a priority to, for active transportation.
Just keep an eye on COVID-19 and keeping people active. I think there could be some opportunities there. All right, so I don't see any other discussion, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I see Kevin Whapler.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Whapler.
Yeah, just, I, I think the consultant mentioned it, like, that was announced about that resilience infrastructure.
Yeah, just, I, I think the consultant mentioned it, like that was announced about that resilience infrastructure stream of funding that has been announced, but there's been no details provided yet on that. So that was something that, yeah, maybe could be applied for to help with, with active transportation.
Absolutely. And certainly from a green, a green initiative in the sense of climate change and stuff, cycling is probably a positive thing in that way. And looking at Council Millen and I, I'm coming to county council someday. We're going to have to leave at midnight, right? Uh, Council Millen? No comments there. All right. So, uh, so no other discussion on this. Any, any, I'm going to put it to vote. Uh, anybody opposed to this amended motion? Okay, I hear none. I'll, I'll say that's carried. County council and staff, should we take a break? Maybe to what? Uh, eleven fifteen, that sound right? Madam Clerk, eleven fifteen?
Sure.
Or is that enough time?
Nope, that, that's council's wish.
Okay. Well, we'll shoot for eleven fifteen and we'll take a break. Make sure you put your, your systems on mute and, and off video thing. Our agenda then, and we've very enjoyed the little break there. The next one we have is our municipal operating funding and this is going to be brought forward by Director Kevin Whipler and it's moved by Counselor Desai and second by Counselor Patterson. So Kevin, if you wish to speak to that.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, um, under the municipal operating stream, there was 1.39 billion dollars that was made available to Ontario's municipalities to address our pressures and, and local needs. This funding could be allocated in two phases, 50% allocated in phase one for all municipalities and 50% allocated in phase two for municipalities that require additional funding. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing provided confirmation on August 12th that is part of phase one of this funding that the County of Gray would receive a payment of just over $3 million to support the county's COVID-19 operating costs and pressures. The county will be accountable for the use of this funding and we're required to report back to the province in March, 2021 with details on the county's 2020 COVID-19 operating costs and pressures. As long, as well as the county's overall 2020 financial position and the use of the provincial funds in a template that's to be provided by the ministry. As the municipal treasurer was required to sign an acknowledgement of this funding for the purpose of assisting with COVID-19 costs and pressures. And that the province expects any funds not required for this purpose in 2020 be put into reserve to support potential COVID-19 costs and pressures in 2021. The province has emphasized that proceeding with an application under phase two should only occur if further assistance is needed to, to address COVID-19 pressures in 2020. Municipalities that cannot demonstrate 2020 COVID-19 financial pressures in excess of their phase one funding allocation will not be considered for additional funding. Based on departmental financial reviews and year on projections, along with additional COVID-19 funding that has been announced, staff anticipate that the municipal operating funding phase one of just over $3 million will be sufficient to support the county's 2020 COVID operating costs and pressures. Therefore, a resolution counts requesting additional funding under phase two is not being recommended and an application is not being planned to be submitted. These estimates, I just like to qualify and that's, that's based on no outbreaks occurring or other extenuating circumstances that we, we don't know of right now, but looking at, at things right now that, that this funding will be sufficient, will be able to carry its funding over into 2021 to use in our 2021 budget. So that's kind of a recap of my report and happy to try to answer any questions.
So just before I go to our questions from the floor, um, Kevin, you and I spoke the other day about if that was extended. And I know maybe certain fiscal calendars or whatever from different levels of government, but if that was extended, could that be a possibility that if you just said about if there's a, a follow-up phase that we need to funding and, and if it was extended, that would give us better opportunity to reflect back on, on if something did happen, right?
It would. I, I, I still believe with the amount of funding that, that we've received and what the expenses we've concurred to date, that I, I don't think we'd still have an issue here with just two months left in the year, but I could see some municipalities being very close with that information would, you know, a longer time would be very helpful to some other municipalities for sure.
Right. Good. Okay. Thank you for that. Questions from county councillors. Madam Clerk, is there somebody?
Yep, Council Millen.
Okay, go ahead, Council Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Kevin, to what degree have we used that first phase of funding or are you anticipating that we may have to send some of it back? Or do we have to hire some accountant from Ohio to figure out how we can use up the, the balance?
Thank you. I'm, I'm relying on what the, what the minister has said, that any of this funding from phase one that we can carry over to 2021 and will use in the 2021 budget then. So that's the intent. I don't, I continue to see, um, long-term care and pragmatic services requiring COVID increased COVID costs. So that, that's the plan is the additional cost that they're going to budget in 2021 that we'll use all of this funding up at that time. But, but I, I cannot demonstrate that we're going to, to need more than the three million that we've got to get us through 2020. So therefore I'm saying it's, it's not appropriate for staff to make an application for phase two and ask for council for a resolution.
Very good. I entirely understand that. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Okay. Thanks, Council Millen. Is there anybody else who wishes to address this motion?
Yes, Council Soever.
Go ahead, Council Soever.
Yes, um, and, and so how much of the three million do we have left? And just the one, want to know, not precisely, but kind of round numbers.
Round numbers, I would, I would suspect we'd have about 1.1 million of it left to carry over to 2021 based on, based on the funding that we're receiving and expenses we're seeing right now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Council Desai, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Council Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question also starts to the, to what expenditures are, are acceptable under this, under this program? Cause, um, sorry, no, there we go. What, what, what expenditures are eligible for the, for the, for this fund? And if there isn't any, uh, any sort of, if there isn't a box that we have to think within, if economic development could be something that we, we undertake through these funds. Thank you, Mr.
The answer to that is that we had to demonstrate or the, the use of the funding as well as any, any measures that you've taken into place to reduce the costs of your municipal operations as well. As well, they asked what other reserves you've used to offset these costs. So we, what I'm basing our numbers on are those costs that, that the departments have charged to their COVID accounts that are what they believe to be COVID related. And saying that, for example, if, uh, admissions were lower and for gray routes, I think that's something that the province would, would anticipate, but they have not given us any guidelines on eligibility line by line. But I believe it's up to staff and council, like, is that appropriate to apply that this funding to? And, and as well, I'm going to need to report on this as, as they've stated in a template in March, but we've not seen that template. So. And, um, sorry, just some of this too, some of the long-term care and, you know, it's been helped by the, the province announced COVID-19 prevention and containment funding that we're getting every month now, which is, which is very, really helped since our first projections on this. So there's as well like gray routes under the MAP COVID relief funding, they received a hundred thousand dollars announced. So all those are really helping as well. So on top of the three million, there's other, other COVID funding streams that it's, that's helping at the county level.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Counselor Desai?
Yes, it does, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
All right. I'm just screening here. Does anybody else have anything to say to this report? Okay. So again, it was moved in second hearing. Not anybody opposed to this, this report. Hearing none, that's carried. Okay, moving on then to the housing option lands in Durham. And I guess it's moved by Counselor Mackey and second by Counselor Woodbury and Kim and Madam CEO and Randy, you're going to take this. So Madam CEO first, is that?
I can, I can start the, the presentation and if I miss anything, Kim can help fill in any gaps that I may have missed.
Sounds good.
So good morning, everyone. So Committee of Management passed a motion on September 22nd, which directed staff to retain a consultant to provide an assessment report of housing build options for the recently acquired lands in Durham. The, the study would investigate the various housing options that would complement the future rebuild of Rockwood Terrace and would assess the capital and operating costs for the various housing options. Some of the housing models could include a campus of care model, which I know we've discussed, uh, at the, both the committee management table and council table. Uh, as well as explore some other options, including nonprofit housing as well as private housing models based on the overall needs and market conditions within the area. Staff engaged with a couple of housing consultants with experience with these types of studies as well as consultants that have experience in Gray County. And based on that staff review of consultants with expertise in this field, especially as it relates to exploring housing options associated with a long-term care build. Staff have retained SHS Consulting to work on this study, which includes an architect sub consultant being Salter Pilon to prepare a concept plan and to assist with the costing of the options. SHS Consulting has completed recent studies of a, of a similar nature for both Wellington County for their Wellington Terrace developments in the town of Fergus and Simcoe County for the Simcoe Manor development in the town of Beaton. Salter Pilon also has project experience with these various housing models associated with long-term care builds. It should be noted that while Salter Pilon is providing advice on this particular study, they will not be excluded from bidding on future work associated with the redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace or for any other associate development of the Durham lands. The project is designed to be done in two phases. So the first phase of the study would consist of a market assessment to determine the need and demand for various senior housing options in this area. Interviews and focus groups will be conducted as part of this phase to assess the housing needs. And this phase would also review housing trends and preferences, including housing types such as assisted living, rental housing, both marketed and affordable, garden homes, memory care units and life lease equity forms of housings as well as potentially others. A supply analysis will also be done to determine the housing options that either exist or are proposed already within the area. And look at the nature of the accommodation and supports that are being offered today. Also looking at the pricing and affordability of those supports and looking at occupancy rates as well as our waiting lists, including our county housing waiting lists. A report would be provided showing the findings from phase one. Phase two of the project would be the preparation of a, a business plan for the, for the various housing options. And we'll look at the potential capital and operating costs. This phase would also explore sources of funding, including funding from provincial and federal programs, options for governance, a review of similar developments elsewhere and identifying required planning approvals. A concept plan would also be developed as part of the phase two. The project is estimated to take approximately six months to complete and the consultant is able to start right away. The project was estimated to cost $75,000. Based on the project bid, the project is anticipated to cost approximately $57,500 plus HST. So, so based on HSS's experience with similar related projects, including in Wellington County and Simcoe County, as well as their previous experience on housing option studies associated with long-term care bill, bills, as well as their experience and knowledge based on past projects in Gray County. The purchasing and materials manager in consultation with the Director of Corporate Services single sourced this work to SHS Consulting as per the purchasing policy. Kim, I don't know if I missed anything. If you have anything further to add. But that's, uh, that just provides an overview of, of this and we're, we're excited to work with HSS Consulting on this project and, and to bring this information forward to council.
Well, thanks, Randy. And Madam CEO, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I think Randy's covered it well. I think we're very fortunate that these two groups were able to accommodate this request. I think having the benefit of their extensive experience means that, you know, we're going to have a, a project that can, that can come together and run, run efficiently. They have a good awareness of the kind of questions to ask and options for us to, to consider. And I'm, I'm really excited. I, I had a really good sense of, of their willingness to, to work with us and their understanding of some of the unique characteristics of, of Gray County.
Great. Well, thank you. And are there any questions or comments from county councillors?
Uh, Council Millen.
Okay, go ahead, Council Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think it would be a fair assumption to say that the, there's going to be some benefit to the local municipality that this project is situated in. I'm wondering, is there an opportunity for West Gray to contribute to the expense of this consultant?
Well, thank you for that comment, Council Millen. And I guess I'll, I'll head over to the mayor of West Gray, Council, Council Robinson.
Well, thank you, Warden McQueen. And, um, you know, this is a great opportunity for all Gray County residents and certainly the residents of, of West Gray. If it is something that Gray County is interested in, certainly. I do know that West Gray Council is most supportive of this project, not only for the, the local initiatives and opportunities, but for Gray County overall. So that is, that is a very positive question, and I think it's something that West Gray Council should entertain. I also have a comment afterwards if I might.
Okay. Um, I don't know if there's a follow-up from Council Millen, but I would say if not, you continue on. Council Millen, do you have any further up comments there?
No.
Okay. So then, Council Robinson, you can continue on then.
Well, thank you. I just want to say that this is a really great opportunity to conduct the assessment and also for Gray County Council to be presented with a concept of, of the property and what this overall housing inventory could do with regard to the Rockwood Terrace and also for Gray County residents overall. As I understand, there will be a report through Gray County Planning that will be on our West Gray Planning Meeting in November. So we're certainly most interested to look at what that report will present. And I also think that is a great, a grand opportunity at that time for West Gray Council to look at if there's any opportunity for funding. Thank you.
And it could be in kind funding as well.
Yeah, there's many, many opportunities. So it's just an exciting project for all of Gray County. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this report?
Yes, the CEO has some comments.
Okay, Madam CEO.
Oh, you're muted.
Apologies. Um, one very quick, quick correction. And I'm sorry if this didn't get to the delegation discussion earlier this week, Mayor Robinson. Randy and I had, had discussed whether or not it made sense to bring the planning report at this stage or whether it would be more useful to delay that till we got a little farther in our, in our work with the consultants. And, um, and our feeling was that it likely made more sense to come forward in the wintertime. Once some of this background work had, had moved a little further along. I don't know, Randy, if you want to speak to that at all.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll have definitely a lot more information for sure in the first quarter of 2021. Once we have at least the, the findings from the phase one report and even starting to get into some of the concept plans that Selter Pilon would then help to, to create. We are also actively going to be putting on RFP soon to work on the D six, looking at some of the servicing capacity and servicing options and some other work that needs to be done in order to prepare for eventual shovels in the ground in almost properties. So that's something that we're also actively working on. And, and again, we will have further information on that in the first quarter of 2021. We're happy to provide an update to West Gray Council or to any councils for that matter in terms of. in terms of where we're at with this particular project. But I think we will definitely have some further information in, in early or later on in, in for sure, the first quarter of 2021 that we can definitely present and bring forward to West Gray Council. As well as.
Mr. Warden?
Go ahead. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. I really appreciate that update. And certainly I, I think that's a good update for all members of council. West Gray, West Gray Council in particular will anticipate that report when it is available. Certainly understand timeframes definitely do change. But what I would, what I would ask at this point is, is it most appropriate now to provide a media release out to our Gray County residents so that they know the status and the update at this point in terms of where we're at with the project? Pending the consideration with council on this particular item being in the positive, could we, at the county level, issue a media release? Thank you.
Thinking of Rob Hatton, but Madam CEO?
I think that, that would be just, just fine. I think with council's support today, then we can move forward and, and share some good news with the public.
Very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Are there any other questions or comments with regards to this, this report? Nobody there, Madam Clerk?
No, nothing that I can see, sir.
All right. And like I said, it was moved by Counselor Mackey, Counselor Woodbury. Anybody opposed to this report? There are none. I would determine that to be carried. All right, moving on then. Moving on to the next report is moved by the Deputy Warden and Counselor Hicks, second by Counselor Desai. This is with regards to some changes to the inaugural session. And Madam Clerk, this is, you're going to sort of speak to this one. Oh, you're on.
I am. And who would have thought in March that we'd have to think about inaugural in a totally different way? I'm bringing this report forward for council to have some, just some initial discussion related to the 2021, 2021 election of the warden. 2020, as we all know, has been anything but normal. And looking ahead to 2021, the inaugural session is fast approaching. It's hard to believe that it's not that far away. Recently, council approved changes to the procedural bylaw to allow electronic participation in meetings. These changes did not cover all of the areas of the election of the warden, including receiving nominations on the floor, scrutineers, secret ballot, and timing. So historically, council will know that the election of the warden is held in person on the first Tuesday in December at 7:30. Nomination speeches and the election are held and then followed by a social function. The impacts of COVID-19 have required staff to think outside the box and look for alternatives in, for electing the 2021 warden. Staff are looking for some discussion around holding either a smaller in-person inaugural session or an electronic meeting with some changes in process for this year. And the report outlines some pros and cons to both of those options for council's consideration. The climate of the day, the current provincial and health regulations in place closer to December 1st may in fact dictate which option may be viable. It just depends on where things are at. And as much as it, it's not that far away, things are changing on a regular basis. Some of the changes noted in the report, including moving the time to an earlier day, as there will be no social function to follow, implementing a deadline for nominations so that if an electronic poll is necessary, this can be developed in advance of a meeting and the waiving of scrutineers should the meeting be held in electronic form. Zoom, which we've been using for our council meetings, does allow for an anonymous poll to be created. And reaching out to my peers in some other counties here on Dufferin and Simcoe, they're also looking to use this feature should it be required. Either way, closer to the time, staff would be looking for a motion to waive certain sections of the procedural bylaw if they are in order closer to the inaugural date as noted above. And it would include, what it includes will be dependent on whether it's an in-person meeting or an electronic meeting. And in accordance with the procedural bylaw, a two-thirds majority is required in order to waive any section of the bylaw. So I'm, I'm really looking for some initial discussion from council members on electronic meeting versus in-person. We also, because we've never used a poll before, if council wishes to and show how it would work and the anonymity around it, Rob has prepared a short, lighthearted poll that we could run through if council would like to just see how it works. So I'm open for questions. I'd really like to hear your thoughts on, on a smaller in-person meeting versus a, an electronic inaugural session.
Okay, well, let's get some comments first and then we'll bring Rob in. Okay?
See Counselor Desai.
Go ahead, Counselor Desai.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. It's not a secret that I love in-person meetings a lot more than Zoom meetings. But I think one of the things we need to consider is, is everyone feeling comfortable and being able to participate in, in the election of the warden. It's an important office. It's the head of our council. And I, I don't think it, it, it's fair to ask that certain people for the fear of their health not participate in it. So as much as I, I would like to have an in-person meeting, I think it would be appropriate to have a virtual meeting, especially if there are ways that we can have a, a, a voting mechanism in place, which would mirror what we would do in, in the council chambers in person with the secret ballot and whatnot. And with regards to the, the lighthearted poll, I, I want to do it at this point just to see what the lighthearted poll is. But again, it was a really good report and it's a tough decision, I understand. Especially when, you know, some of us are looking forward to being back in council chambers. But I think it's, it's fair to everyone to have it virtually. If that's the, the, I think that's the best way forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Ward.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments, Sir Counselor Desai. Any other comments?
Counselor Millen?
Go ahead, Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I have no problem with, with a, a virtual meeting such as we're having. One concern I do have is the, the voting, and, and I have full faith in, in Rob's magic and Heather's endorsement. But that said, I'm just wondering, would the vote have to be conducted like right at the moment the vote is called? Or would there be an opportunity to say, okay, you, you need to vote over the course of, say, two or three days, whatever? Because some people's internet, mine included, is pretty wonky. And if right at that moment, my internet craps out, now my franchise is gone. So I'm wondering if that would be a consideration to, to conduct the vote over a period of time so that everyone has a fair opportunity to submit their ballot. Thank you.
Good comments. Are there any other comments?
Counselor Potter had some comments.
Very quickly, I just wanted to agree with Counselor Desai. I would love to see an in-person meeting. But I think for, for this year, we are going to have to get used to things being different, and this is one of them. If we can't have the social time afterwards, which to me is, is every bit as important as the actual election, then I, I think we are better to do this a safe way and to continue to show leadership to the community that we are taking the, the right measures.
Okay, good comments.
Counselor Patterson and Counselor Robinson.
Okay, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden. I look at it as we are leaders in this county. We need to set the example because people are looking at us and we need to be safe. We're telling people to continue with these electronic meetings and physically distance. So I think an electronic meeting would be just fine. And if there was an issue with any internet, could that individual call in their vote? Like there are ways around it if somebody's internet goes down and Rob can probably speak to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think you said Merrick Compass, is that what you said?
Counselor Robinson.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Robinson. Sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Robinson.
Oh, thank you through you. Statement question. So I absolutely support the, the idea of having a virtual meeting for all of the statements made by county councilors. So I don't need to repeat all that. My question is, there was most recently an AMO election for a number of caucuses. And one of the opportunities that delegates were able to, to be involved in was to look at any of the speeches they wished to, and that may help determine or help formulate part of their decision to vote. Is there an opportunity that should there be in a, a race that, that the potential candidates record their message in advance? Thank you.
Okay. Good comments. I think you were part of those candidates.
That's correct.
Right.
And I, through you, Mr. Warden, I think we are open. We have to think outside the box this year. And so we, we have to think about other ways of doing things. And if we have, you know, more than one candidate for Warden for 2021, then that would be a discussion that, as the clerk, I could have with each of those candidates about putting their, their speeches in writing and sending those out for council's review prior to the, the inaugural session. That's certainly a discussion to have.
You check for grammar first?
Always.
All right. Any other comments out there before we go to Rob? Okay, Rob?
Sorry, I don't know if Counselor Desai has another question. I see his hand. Nope.
No, 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 thank you.
Okay.
He's just moving, he's just moving things around there, like me. Okay, Mr. Hatton, do you, would you like to give us a small presentation?
Absolutely. So I think I'll just start by saying that Zoom has a lot of features in it, many of them that we don't really have an opportunity to use all the time. But this is a platform that isn't made for running government particularly. So there are just some concessions that we need to make when we're using it as an online platform. So launching a poll is quite straightforward. However, on the actual election night, what I would need to do is I would need to change all counselors' roles to attendees to ensure that the poll is only going to counselors. Right now, since this is just a lighthearted one, as Heather's calling it, I'm going to issue it to everyone and I'd just ask the staff and senior management not to participate in this as it goes up. So as Heather says, this is a lighthearted poll, but this is actually one of the most divided and controversial issues going in my household and I'm sure many others as well. So you should see it pop up now. So this will be the question. And you can see there's a timer going at the top. At least I can see the timer anyways. So we would probably allow a set amount of time to participate. Are you having the opportunity to click on that as panelists right now?
It says hosts and panelists cannot vote.
Okay, I will relaunch poll and allow panelists to vote. So this is how it would only go to attendees if I do it the other way. So I will launch this now and we can settle it once and for all.
If we can't have fun, what can we do, right?
All right. So I think that that probably is enough time here. So as we can see, Heather, the correct way to hang a toilet paper roll is over the front. And I can share this out to everyone. So you can see the result. Over the front with sheets draped outwards. This is unanimous. And Heather, you can probably prepare the bylaw on that one now.
Mr. Warden, I was going to complain there was no chance for debate, but I guess we don't need it.
Well, well, I guess we all learned this, we all learned it at school, which way to hang toilet paper, I guess, say.
I guess.
Run on the day of inaugural. And as I said, we would, we would look for nominations prior to that. So Rob would have the opportunity to build that poll prior to the meeting. And I appreciate all of the comments that council has provided today. I do see Counselor Millen's hand up again.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Millen.
Thank you. So that was fairly straightforward, Rob. But as Counselor Patterson pointed out, if somebody's internet crapped out, could they phone in? How would that apply to what you just did there?
Rob?
So if they, the phone in, I don't believe you can participate in votes by phone in. We could probably concede it another way in that you call myself or whoever the vote taker is. And we would add that to the totals. But there, as far as I know, is not an option for phone participation in the polls.
Can I?
Okay, go ahead, who would like to speak?
It's, it's me. It, Kim. Through you, Mr. Warden. Rob, on the back end, are, are, do you see how many people voted? I know you don't see who voted, but do you see how many voted?
Yes, I do. I can see there that we had 15 votes submitted in that practice poll.
All right.
You don't know who exactly didn't vote, so you couldn't get on and phone back and say, Mr. Millen, you haven't voted yet?
No, that is the compromise with the anonymous voting is that I can't see who has or has not. I can only see the totals that they're submitted.
And when people voted and they clicked submit, do you get something back on your screen? I didn't vote, so I don't know. Did it, for those of you that did vote, when you submitted your vote, did it, did something happen? That you knew that it was successful?
The voting screen just disappeared.
Okay, so that.
But you don't get an acknowledgement that your vote has been tallied.
Yeah.
Per se.
Yeah.
Other than it, it, when it tapped, it topped on, it went blue. It's minded.
Well, yeah, and the screen disappears once you hit submit.
Yeah.
I do see Counselor Hicks with his hand up.
Counselor Hicks, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In the poll that we just did with the toilet paper, we, we can see, we saw on the screen that 15 people voted in total. There should be 18 of us around the table. So even in that poll, we could probably see that there were three people who did not vote. Would that be correct, Rob?
That's right. Yeah, we only had 15 votes that were submitted there.
So I, I guess playing that out at inaugural, if we're voting on the vote for a warden and we saw that there were 15 votes, but yet 18 people, I'm going to say in their seat, 18 people present, but 15 vote. What would we do if everybody said, well, I don't know if my vote counted? You know, so all 18 of us, I would, I would assume would want their vote to count, but we conceded only 15 were counted. Would we redo the vote until we had 18?
Well, that would certainly be an option that we could do. I don't know, Heather, if you would have an alternative to that, but that's what I would suggest is we redo it until we have the correct number of votes cast.
Yes, I would see that or until there's a clear majority. So if, if we had 15 votes cast and 13 of them were for a particular person, then that would be the majority of council. I do see Counselor Thompson and Counselor Body.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Thompson and then Counselor Body.
Thanks very much. So I, I've had one thing to do and I messed it up already. So it took me a little longer than the rest of you to figure out how to use that poll. I guess that's, that's why I'm not a county counselor and I'm, I'm just a township counselor maybe. But without the commentary, I would say I figured it out at the very last second, but I have no confidence that I was one of the 15 and not one of the three. So, so you're right, that is a bit of a question about nothing confirmed. So you know, if you ask me if I was one of the 15, I would say 50/50 chance. So you really don't have the confidence at the last second.
So maybe with that, would there be a, a call out from Rob to say, has everybody voted? Do you need more time? Or, or is that something that maybe, or you, a lot, so much time there?
For sure. I think that's something that we could plan ahead of time is that we'll allow two minutes for voting and I can do. And I can do a call out when there's 30 seconds remaining or something along those lines, just to ensure that everyone does have adequate time. That was rushed through there.
So when that two minutes is going on, Rob, can you see like 10, 12, 14? Can you see that that many votes are coming in, or do you only see it after that's all done?
I see them as they're submitted. I see the number climbing. Yeah.
So if all of a sudden you see 18, then you know that every, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. And if there was a situation that somebody couldn't vote, can that be confirmate, confirmed by email through telephone? Or is that something that telephone is suffice? Only reason I say by email, it sort of is, it's a timestamp as well, right?
So if someone is not able to vote, if they're having like a technical issue. For sure, I can have my cellphone number out there, so someone can give me a call or text me if they're having difficulty, and I can inform counsel of that, and then we can try to work through that problem.
Right. I guess the other question I was saying though is if somebody was saying, well, how do we know that's the vote? If it was by a text or email, it's a timestamp that it shows other than verbal. It's a timestamp from the email or the text. So it's another way of confirming. I guess that was the point I was saying.
Yeah, that would, that would work if someone's internet was down and they notified us that they needed to do a vote as an alternative method. I could certainly track that. It would, there would be a record of that timestamp for validation.
Okay. Any other comments or any thoughts, any more thoughts there, Rob?
Counsel Body and Counsel Hutchinson.
Oh, yes, that's right. Sorry about that. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Body. I apologize.
This is obviously a democratic conspiracy. It's going to end up in fraud. We're going to have 21 counts. It's going to take us two weeks to count the votes and untake mist of the Supreme Court of Canada. Just guys, somebody had to say it.
Oh, I know. You've been listening to too much news.
I was gonna say, are we, is Owen Sound building a wall and making Georgian gloves pay for it?
Oh, dear. No, we're gonna, we're gonna build that wall a little farther south.
It'd be the best wall it's ever built, ever. Just watch. Never been a better wall built.
All right, we'll bring it back. Okay, who's next to Madam Clerk?
Counsel Hutchinson.
Go ahead, Counsel Hutchinson. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, I'm happy where we are up to here, but what happens if we get to where we were in this term where we have a tie? How, how's that gonna unfold? Just out of curiosity, because not sure how that one would work.
Madam Clerk?
Oh, that's a good question. The, the really is, the tie vote, as per the procedural bylaw, is two names placed in, in a hat or ballot box, and a name is drawn. So that is in our procedural bylaw, and through Zoom, that could happen where each name, we would know exactly who is running, and we would have each name, Counselor A, Counselor B, you would see me put those in the box. We would have perhaps the C O draw the name out and show through Zoom which name was drawn. So very similar, but not to what happened last year.
Thank you for the clarity. I just wanted to know what we had a plan there. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions to this report? So for clarity to you, Madam Clerk, I'm sort of gathering electronic form is the way everybody is saying. Do we need to, do we need to do one of your test polls there, Rob? Maybe not.
I think, I think we, I've got some clear direction here, and I do, I will then bring some motions forward closer to that time. We'll see what the, where we're at with the climate and regulations and such. And I will bring back a motion for counsel to consider related to making, waiving certain sections of the procedural bylaw. Now, I do see that Counsel Robinson noted a comment.
Counsel Robinson?
My, my only comment was, and it's already been addressed by other members of county council, and that was to also include some sort of recognition after we vote that the vote has in fact been submitted. So if there's a receipt opportunity there. So thank you.
Okay, so, so Madam Clerk, we do have it moved by Counsel Desai, or sorry, Counsel Hicks and Counsel Desai. Do you need some direction to say that we're supporting electronic versus in-house, or you're okay?
I'm okay with that. I've gotten clear, counsel's been very clear in their, in their response for electronic, and I will be bringing forward a motion at likely the next meeting, with your business arising for council's consideration.
And I was just looking at the counselor, the calendar for November, you have November 12th and 26. And I guess it all depends on, if we're going electronic, that pretty well takes care of the, if it increases or whatever anyway, so.
Correct.
I would leave it up to there. Okay, is there any further discussion on this report? Hearing on, anybody opposed? Okay, so that's carried. Thank you, Madam Clerk and everyone. All right. So then moving forward, we have the next one with regards to EMS coverage for the county, and it's moved by Counsel Desai and Counsel Mackey. And Kevin McNabb, you're going to speak to this report.
One County Council, I'll just bring up the report here. Everyone see that?
Yep.
Thanks. I just wanted to recognize Joel Meyer, G I S specialist for his assistance with this, as well as Mary Lou Spicer, and Joel will be presenting as well. Mary Lou will be on if there's any questions around the financial that I can't answer. So thank you for this. This is a follow-up report to the response time submission from August, where we asked to bring a report back to look at response time enhancements. So the, the recommendation that this report be received and that response time enhancement be considered for 2021 budget and that staff participation continues the development and implementation of new models of care in the community. So great county paramedic services required each year to submit a response time plan, and we're also required to report on those plans. We've seen as emergency call volumes increasing over the last number of years, particularly since 2016 in our emergency call volumes. But over the last 10 years, we've seen a 3.4% increase yearly for code threes and a 5.9% increase for code fours. In the call line from 2019, what we're seeing now is our calls are actually just, just around 1,000 calls over from when we developed the response time standards in 2012. So addressing some of these volumes, what we've looked at is things to maintain response times. We focused our response on emergency calls. At one time, we used to do 40 to 45% of our calls were on emergency transfers. Now we look at approximately 2% are non-emergency transfers. In 2011, due to call volumes on weekends and holidays, we've upstaffed at Craiglea just in regards to the increased ski season in the Blue Mountains area. In 2013, we utilized a, an eight-hour day car and partial that funding went to upstaff Dundalk. And then in 15, we did the same thing for Craiglea, to upstaff that base. And in 2019, we utilized an eight-hour ambulance on Monday to Friday to put our first response unit on seven days per week. We've also looked at community programs to address call volumes. Since 2015, we have a home visit program where we look after patients with chronic disease like CHF, COPD and diabetes. We have an expanded scope of care for our community paramedics. We have community clinics there in Owen Sound, Miford, and Thornbury. We've started now with vulnerable patient follow-up. We look at high-use callers and we connect them with community resources, whether it be home care, 2-on-1 community connections, as well as addictions services. Our paramedics on the road, they have a screening tool for patients over 65 that are, could be deemed at risk as well. As well as we have the paramedics that are doing this on their, on their own as a special unit. And we've also, for a number of years, utilized the mental health urgent response team, a partnership with them to work within the community to respond to mental health emergencies, to work alongside us to get people to care than even their home. So around response times and emergency coverage, we break our response times down by C tasks. And we've seen numerous presentations on this on cardiac arrest. Of the first two categories of the cardiac arrest, it's, it's a six-minute response 40% of the time. And our C task one is an eight-minute response 6, 60% of the time. These calls, they only represent though roughly about 2% of our call volume. And just because of the short timeframes, we do find them difficult to, to reach those in a significant amount of time. You'll see based upon where our population is and how we meet those targets. But really, what we face in rural Ontario, it is an area problem. I sometimes compare this to, when I worked in Toronto, we had 625 square kilometers. We had close to 50 bases and 100 ambulances. In Gray County, we have 4,500, 4,600 square kilometers. And really, almost one base location is as busy, as big as the size of Toronto. And but, you know, we are busy, and then that's the problem is we have busy times where we have three, four, five calls at a time. But we're covering such a large area, so we try to spread out as much as we can to cover those areas. So this was put together by Joel for us, and he looks at the population within the response time and then outside the response time. And when we say six minutes and eight minutes, six minutes for cardiac arrest and eight minutes for C task one, and then 14 minutes for our C task two, what we do is we build into those a one-minute shoot time because it's not from the time that we, the drive time, it's from the time we actually get the call. So we build in that shoot time where we actually get the call, get in the vehicle, and get going, locate the address. So if you look at the population within the cardiac arrest, 31% of the population rely, rely upon that. And that we're over the 40%, so we are meeting better than what our population would say. And our C task one, 42% of the population, and we're above 60%. And C task two, the 14-minute drive time, we're around, we're around that 90%, just around the 90% mark. And similar for the C task three to five, we're in the mid 90s for it. So this slide just gives you a look at our response times, first of all, for 2019, where we've met the criteria in all areas except for the C task two. That, the last time that we met in that area was in 2015. And that's typically where we started to see the rise in emergency calls in that period of time. But we are close, we're not very far under that target. And the other areas, we have been meeting there mostly. There was a period of time where we didn't meet in the cardiac arrest area of 40%, but we have corrected that in the last, last couple of years. But then, so we are measured against the county response time, but we do look at the lower tier response times. And some of these ones that falls back to the distance issue again. And especially when you see this sudden cardiac arrest and C task ones, like just to draw your, so some comparators. If you look at Hanover and Owen Sound, where we only look at that municipality where we have an ambulance base, we do meet those targets quite strongly. But when you get into other municipalities where a lot of the population is outside of an urban area where our bases are, that's where you start to see some of these response times drop off. But overall, we're meeting the response time targets for the county. But what this chart does show us is there is some areas, you look at Chatsworth and Gray Highlands and some other areas as well, and overall, to look at areas where we, if we were looking at improving response times, where we could. And I always like these ones. I like to go back in history just to see, because it's good to see that how we break them down by C task. But overall, our county response time in 2019 was 14 minutes and 51 seconds. And when we assumed the service in 2004 with a significant less number of code four calls, we were around 17 minutes. So with the support of counsel, we have actually improved our response time from when we took over. And just to give you an idea of the average response time, it's seven minutes and 43 seconds. In 2019, we upstaffed Chatsworth. It's been great to be able to have a base in that area. We moved a 12-hour car out of Owen Sound. And when we don't have that car there right now, we do, and the resources are available, we move them out from Owen Sound or use our community paramedic to cover those areas. In Chatsworth in 2019, there was 379 code four calls and 145 code three calls. You can see that we have had made a difference there. Roughly four code four calls decreased by three minutes from 2017. And when we're during staff hours, we actually decreased our response time by, by over four minutes. And our average response time also decreased by over two minutes during the same timeframe. We did see some improvements, particularly around the C task two, roughly about 10% increase. But the cardiac arrest and C task ones, we really didn't see any. And maybe a bit of through the C task three and five when you break them out. But just back to those call volumes, when you start breaking them down, you know, 379 calls and that, it's, it's hard to move some of those numbers. That was just the chart to show you that when we look at the 90th percentile for code fours, when the unit staffed, it's 17 minutes and 18 seconds, but when we don't have a vehicle there, it's 21 minutes and 14 seconds, which is four minutes, which is a significant movement of a 90th percentile to drop those timeframes down. So Joel's gonna help with the analysis, and thank him for this. He's gonna go through some analysis that we run.
Thanks, Kevin. Hopefully everyone can hear me. Okay, so Kevin had asked me to give a visual for the response times and also to do some analysis to see about where potential future bases could be. So as you can see on the slide, there are currently eight bases. Some operate 24 hours a day. The Chatsworth one does not. It only operates 12 hours a day. So if we go to the next slide, you can see a map of. Sorry. Oh, sorry. If we look at the analysis, so we wanted to see what would happen, what the coverage would look like for 24-hour days from Chatsworth. So we want, like Kevin said, the idea is to maximize coverage within the county. So trying to see, using the bases we already have, and then looking at where potentially we could put additional ones to maximize that coverage and be able to serve the residents of the county better. So if we look at, the next slide is the investigation. So the addition of a night base. So we use the C task two response standard, as that's the most common response that the cars are making. So it was used to figure out the drive time. So it's a 15-minute response with a one-minute shoot time for 14 minutes of actual driving. So if we look at the next slide, we can see what our current response time is while all bases are manned. So you can see we have fairly good coverage within the county, but there are some notable exceptions down in the southeast corner and up in the northwest. There are some empty areas, and this is all the response time. So the darker the blue, the more time they're given. So if you look on the legend there, you'll see SCA, so sudden cardiac arrest. That's a six-minute response time, including your one-minute shoot time, all the way to a C task three and four, which is 20 minutes. So this is using your drive time here. Trying to create these shapes to see what sort of coverage we have within the county. Obviously, the SCA times are going to be quite small, and the more time you have, the larger drive time area you have. Moving on to the next slide, please. So we looked at two different scenarios here, and the next few maps will show this. The first one was what would happen right now if Owen Sound and Miford both had a call. Something that's not uncommon to bases getting calls. So it does require mobilization of different units throughout the county in order to extend that coverage. So certain units go to a standby coverage here, you can see. So right now, if Owen Sound and Miford are on a call, they're not available. So in the evenings, when Chatsworth is not available, Markdale has to drive all the way up to Owen Sound, Dundalk drives to a standby location, flush. Dundalk drives to a standby location, Flesherton. Craigleaf drives to a standby location at Thornbury in order to provide coverage. The orange polygons around these locations are the C task two response. So that's the distance that they can drive and the coverage that they're providing. And you can see in the evenings that the coverage is severely diminished when there are two calls out. So one of the investigations we looked at was whether if we put Chatsworth on its own, on a 24-hour call, how much additional coverage would be offered? So if we look through the next slide here, with Chatsworth on a 24-hour schedule, you can see that with it driving up to Owen Sound and with Craigleaf driving to Thornbury, there's still significantly more coverage within the southeastern portion of the county than if Chatsworth didn't have that 24-hour call. The second scenario we looked at was if there was a single call in Owen Sound in the evenings, it would still require significant mobilization of standby units if Chatsworth doesn't exist. So if we look here, the two, one with a Chatsworth vehicle and one without. With Chatsworth car being there, it means that only Chatsworth needs to drive up to Owen Sound as opposed to Miford coming over and Craigleaf coming over. So it allows much more coverage within the shoreline there on Georgian Bay. So the next investigation we looked at was where could potential additional bases be located? So we took all the calls between 2013 and 2019. So it was just over 93,000 total calls. And then we divided the county into a bunch of hexagonal grids. Each grid was then associated the optimum number of calls using the stations we already have. And we were able to allocate theoretically where each call could be responded to by our bases as well as the neighboring bases. So we looked at Mount Forest and Wyreton. So this gave us a theoretical location for two new bases if we were to put them in. And they were ranked too, and that's all in Kevin's report. So you can look at, there's one just outside of Ben Allen there and one in Feversham. This would be the theoretical locations that would be able to maximize the coverage within Gray County. That's all for me. Thank you.
Just to finish off here, we'll also, it's more than just putting resources at a problem of increasing call volumes. And again, we are all under the, we all know that, you know, putting resources in something endlessly is not something that's financially sustainable. But so we are responsible to look at, you know, different ways and doing things differently as far as new models. And the government, they've been working on this for a number of years and it is moving forward now. The first one is around dispatch, about putting a better dispatch tool in, better prioritize 911 calls as well as able to redirect low acuity calls to other appropriate care within the community. And with recent changes to the ambulance act, it allows us to start to do some of the work in that area. We have a very strong community program, but this program actually starts to bring it into the 911 side. So this, looking at options of treat and refer, treat and release, alternate destination models. It also gives this ability to look at vehicles as far as responding paramedics is being able to send single-person responding paramedics with the, with the potential of not transporting if we have adequate resources and it's from the community to assist us and as long as it's safe to do so. So the first two models of care that the province is looking at, one is around palliative care. And one I'm looking forward to is it will be a fairly easy one, will be one of an alternate destination. Right now, we have to transport to a hospital site with a new model of care. We'll be able to transport a patient directly to a hospice. So we look forward to be able to do that. Also, the ability with this, another model of care is to, if the goals of care for that person would remain at home, if you would see an expanded scope of care for the 911 paramedics or a community paramedic or a single-person response paramedic that would help manage symptoms in their home. As well for mental health calls, behavioral emergencies, looking at working with community agencies about sending, sending a single-person response for patients that require in-home care and in-home supports. Again, working with a mental health professional. What this does is allow us more flexibility to deliver this care. Not everybody needs to go to the hospital. We can work with the community and the community resources to be able to provide this care. And to tell you the truth, I would think a lot of these people that call us, they probably don't have anybody else to call. And so us being able to connect them to community resources and work with our community partners will be a good way of doing this. So it's just another way of, you know, to deal with some of these calls and the rising of them. So we looked at as far as our next steps and one consideration would be to add night coverage at the Chatsworth base. The cost of that is approximately $700,000. It's more than just the four full-time staff. It's all the backfill that's required from as well to maintain that seven-day coverage. Ministry, they, they provide funding based upon 50% of the previous year's operating budget. There is, there hasn't been any inflationary increases in 2020. So what we're looking at is the first year would be 100% funded by the county. So just in closing here, to meet response time targets in the setting of year-over-year increases, we need to look at a combination of additional resources and the changes, the way we deliver our service. We would not recommend increasing our response times at all to meet them. We'd like to continue to work towards meeting them. But by doing this, by adding incremental ambulance resources and also modernizing our service delivery, we feel this is the best way to maintain and improve upon our response times.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. And just before I go to county council, this is a quick question, a couple of quick questions. You have EMS vehicles that move around a bit, right? So they sort of, it could be like I've seen it at night where one will be sitting at a certain intersection or they'll move around. And my other question to that is probably seasonal changes, your response or your type of calls? And we have any comments there?
Yeah, so as a call happens, and I've, I've said this a lot, like the call that happens, I'm concerned about what happens, happening on the call. But really what I'm concerned about is what's in place to handle the next call. Especially there's two calls in one community, so we need resources to split those response times. So that's where you see sitting in Thornbury and Allen Park and Flesherton are our standby locations. Those types of things. And sorry, what was your next question?
So just depending on the season, certain, your seasonal calls could probably vary. Plus you got winter, so you have to accommodate as well, right?
So we do see spikes, I would say July and August and December. You know, July and August tourism and stuff like that, more people in the community as well as December. Those are kind of our peak months. But, but there's about, there, there, that's where the peaks are. But you know, it's outside, that's pretty stable. Weekend ski season, we definitely feel it with multiple calls at once. That's when we feel a lot of the ski season.
Right, right. And especially toward a weekend.
Weekends and holidays.
Yeah, no doubt. Okay, well, thank you for that. Questions, Madam Clerk, you had a list of people?
Yes, I do. Councillors Robinson, Potter, and Millen.
Okay, I'll go down through that list. Okay, go ahead, councillor Robinson first.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. And I don't know why my video went off. I must have pressed the wrong button there for a moment. Anyway, Kevin and Joel, thank you very much for a comprehensive report and presentation. Most appreciated. I'm very supportive of the staff recommendations. And I appreciate the positive progression that paramedic service has made for response times and service enhancements for Gray County residents, businesses, and visitors. So well done. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Councillor Potter and then councillor Millen.
Thank you very much. And I'm happy to see consideration being implemented to Fever Sham. I think we have a big open area in this side of Gray that needs improved service. And I think that is a good, a good step. But Kevin, I just wondered, are you seeing any impacts as we get this influx of people moving in from the cities? We are not alone, by the way. I was on a call yesterday, a webinar with, with communities across Canada that are having the same issue. But I wondered if you're seeing any impacts, whether we have a way of tracking what's going on and how we might deal with that.
Okay, Kevin.
I don't have specific data. I know that, like for instance, in, in, in the town of Blue Mountains on weekends and holidays, like our call volumes do spike. And we do have a number of calls happen at once. I know the July and August numbers, like they're up there. So I would think that's a traveling season. I know, like, to be just the anecdotal things, I know, like I haven't looked at it. But I know even when the, our initial community shutdowns happened, there was a significant reduction in car accidents with less people on the road. You know, and soon as the road started to increase, the accidents started happening. So those are anecdotal. But that's something that, you know, with Joel's help, we could look at some of that information and having that data available.
If I, if I might just, Mr. Warden, just very quickly, yeah, because a lot of the, what we see as traditionally as weekend traffic or, or seasonal is now becoming full-time. And we're trying to track that in our community, and I know others are too. So I think we're going to have to watch that and see where these populations settle and, and whether our models and, and what we have, our levels of service still meet the need.
Right, very good. Okay, next councillor, Millen?
Yeah, it was just a comment, not a question. I just, you know, I see the requests there, the, the resources that are required to upstaff Chatsworth at three-quarters of a million dollars. That's an annual cost and it'll only go up. You know, I, I guess if this report had come, and I, and I know this isn't a formal request, that'll come at budget time. But if this report had come ahead of the cycling report, I think I would have been inclined to support more resources to first response than signs for the cyclists. But I mean, again, it, it goes back to our strategic planning as well. It's a, it's a matter of priorities. And I, I think we need to think seriously about what our priorities are for the residents of this county. And I thank Kevin and his team for the work they do and stay safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, councillor Millen. And I think councillor Mackie, I think you were indicating you wish to speak.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And a sincere thanks to Kevin and Joel. Those maps were really helpful to, to understand where the gaps are. So I certainly appreciate the maps. And Chatsworth would be more than welcoming and having a 24-hour service so that we can assist our neighbors to the north and to the south. Just a question, Kevin, in regards to the coordination of vehicles. Is a coordination done with Bruce County and Simcoe County? When, you know, our buses are out on a call? Are some of those other resources in the neighboring counties moving in closer to assist?
Questions, Kevin?
Generally, the day today, when calls happen, we use our own resources. But for, for instance, in London, they, the same desk, they call it the North Desk. They look after Bruce County as well as ourselves. So there's coordination when, when resources get short, that of where we position vehicles and we help them out and they help us out. And it's the same with Simcoe and Dufferin, it's a different dispatch area. So we have to deal with Simcoe and Cambridge. But in those settings, we do help them out. And whether, you know, if we were really sure they would come in, there's times they cover from their base locations. We make sure somebody's at that next base location. But, but that's all considerations that we take into account.
Okay, thank you for this thought. Madam Clerk, is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, so thanks very much, Kevin and staff, for bringing this forward. And good, good information. It's always interesting to hear those stats and how we're improving as we go along. This is moved by councillor Desai and councillor Mackie. This is back to say what was moved up before. And is there anybody opposed to this resolution, this, this report? Okay, hearing none, that is carried. All right, so moving on then to the Cedar Rail Campground OPA three. And this has been moved by councillor Mackie and second by councillor Leary. And Scott, he's going to take this one on, or Randy?
I'll take it. Thank you very much, Warden McQueen and members of council. I'm just going to share my screen here, so.
So you must be at home because I don't think I see you in your office.
Yeah, yeah, I'm at home for today. So can everyone see the, the presentation there on the screen now?
Well, I can.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. So what we have before us is a good news story. It's the story about the Cedar Rail Family Campground. And I'll just show you on a map here where we're located. This is on the county line, just north of, of Scone and, and north of Greer 25 there in the south end of the map. And then, of course, you have Bruce County to the west across the county line. The campground property itself is about 53 hectares in size. It, it shares a boundary with the, the North Sawgiun River. And what you can see from, from the aerial photograph there is that the campground is, is on the eastern half of the property and the western half of the property is farmed. And even after this proposed expansion, if it is approved, that western half of the property will remain farmed and remain protected for agriculture in that regard. The Cedar Rail Family Campground was established in, in 1972. And there are current permissions in the Township of Chatsworth zoning bylaw for 200 campsites, 16 cabins, and three cottages. For whatever reason, over the years, and likely because it predates the county official plan, it's never been formally recognized in, in the county plan. That said, it is an entirely legal use because it is recognized in the township zoning bylaw. What they're looking to do through this official plan amendment and an associated zoning amendment that's been submitted to the Township of Chatsworth is amend their approvals such that they could have 300 campsites, four cottages, and then they would have the, the 16 cabin approval removed from the property in that regard. This, I already said that the size of the subject lands. We did have a joint public meeting on this one with Chatsworth on July 15. I would note, this was one of the county's first virtual public meetings. And we ran into a little hiccup because the meeting was supposed to be on July 8. And that morning, widespread internet outages occurred across Chatsworth. So we pivoted and, and were able to, to push it back to July 15. But the Township of Chatsworth was great to deal with in that regard. And their council and staff were excellent on, on helping facilitate this application to move forward in that regard. What I have here on the screen now is, is a map showing the existing camp, campground and campsites. And then what you see circled in red there would be the new sites that are proposing to be added. So the 100 new sites that they're looking at in that regard. We did go through the regular planning process and got comments from a number of agencies. Certainly the Sawgiun Valley Conservation Authority were involved right from the get-go on this just with respect to certainly any impacts on, on the hazard lands and, and the North Sawgiun River in that regard. Our own county transportation services had some comments, being said it was on a county road and just north of another county road. And, and the township staff were, as I said, great to deal with. And, and all of the agencies are supportive of the development now and no further outstanding agency comments in that regard. We did hear from a few members of the public in this regard. And these were people that generally live to the west of the proposed development. Some of them were just general questions and, and wanting information about how to join the Zoom council meeting in that regard. And there were other questions just about the setbacks to their existing dwellings. Township staff took time to, to chat with some of these folks and help them understand that the proposed new sites would be sort of infilled amongst the existing sites. And the campground wouldn't be expanding any further west and therefore not moving any closer to their properties in that regard. So that helped, helped satisfy their, their comments in that regard. From a planning perspective, as I said, it hasn't been recognized in the county official plan. And these lands are actually designated as agricultural and hazard lands. And if this were a brand-new campground, generally, we'd be, we'd be seeking campgrounds of this nature to locate in the rural designation rather than the agricultural lands. That said, because the campground has existed since 1972 and we see great merit in, in allowing for the successful local business to expand, we are looking at an amendment to the agricultural policies in that regard. As I said, while still protecting the western half of the property. As per normal, the development will remain outside of the, the hazard land portion of the site. And, and no further lands would be removed from agricultural production. no further lands would be removed from agricultural production. The lands are being serviced by a, a private communal septic treatment system that's actually been approved already for the expanded site by the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks. And there are two drilled wells on site that supply the water and that water treatment system has also been approved by the ministry in that regard. So from a servicing perspective, they've done their homework and they have all their approvals in place. And with respect to the environmental features on site, including both the river and, and the woodlands and southeast corner, it's not anticipated that the new development is going to have any further impact on the features on site in that regard. With that being said, and after discussing extensively with township staff, county staff are satisfied that the proposal has regard for matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act. It's consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms to the goals and objectives of, of the county official plan. A similar report will be coming forward to Chatsworth Council on the zoning bylaw amendment here shortly, should County Council render a decision on the official plan amendment. As such, my recommendation is, is that the committee, the whole, receive this report and that a, a bylaw be prepared for the subsequent November 12th County Council session to, to look at the exception for this, this campground facility. So that's all I have at the stage, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any from the committee in this regard.
Okay, well, thanks Scott for that. And we'll go back to committee. Any questions to this report on planning? I can't see the screen yet, so I still, there we are. Shirley? Go ahead.
Thanks very much, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Scott, for your presentation. I'm just curious about the cabins, if I may. I noted that you suggested the approval for the 16 current cabins be removed. And is it just that the cabins are older and need to be torn down or they are not in use or not really meeting market needs anymore? Or how can you share anything in relation to the cabins?
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. It's my understanding that they, they have the approval for the cabins on this property, but that they weren't actually built. So that was a future expansion plan at one point, but they didn't move forward with building those cabins. So it really is just the, the campsites and, and the cottages that exist there today. And they would be expanding the campsites by 100 and expanding the cottages by one additional cottage in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Just, you know, on behalf of Township of Chatsworth Council, Cedar Rail has been existence for a long time and we are in strong support of this being, being approved. They've been really good corporate citizens and they have a lot of both full-time seasonal and a few additional campsites that are available. This isn't interfering with, you know, any agricultural land. This is all within the, the contained campground now and I would hope that council sees fit to approve it. Thank you.
Thanks for that, for bringing that forward. Any other comments from kind of counselors? Madam Cook, is there anybody who wishes to speak? Okay, okay, thank you, Madam Cook. And it's been moved by again my Counselor Mackey and seconded by Counselor Leary. Is there anybody opposed to this resolution, this, this report? Hearing none, that is carried. So kind of council, I think through you, Madam Cook, we're going to go back to the item that was pulled now, item B. And that's with regards to correspondence from municipality Meaford, Countywide Waste Management Program and mayor, whoever, councilor, whoever, it's, you pulled this item.
So we need to move and second it, I'm sorry, before we can speak to it.
So councilor, whoever, are you moving this?
Yes.
Okay, who do I have for a second there?
I see Counselor Carlton.
Okay, Counselor Carlton, okay. Thank you, Madam Cook. Go ahead, councilor, whoever.
Yes, I, I just have a question. This correspondence, it talks about a countywide waste management program. And it says it's to be received for information. And I do recall that at our strategic planning meeting, waste management and source separated organics were mentioned as well. And I believe in the discussion, it was talked about a countywide program. So since we're just receiving this for information and there's no action proposed, but yet there seems to be some kind of an action in, under emerging projects and our strategic, our strategy session, I'd just like some clarity. Are, are we planning on moving forward with this? Or considering it? Because you know, I know, I know in Simcoe County and Dufferin County, they do handle the, the waste at, at the county level. But the, the costs are considerably more. For instance, if you total all the costs and divide by the households in Gray County, the individual municipalities, it works out to about $120 a household. Yet in Simcoe, we're at 249 and in Dufferin, we're at 189. So that's considerably more than the average for Gray County and particularly Gray County costs go from a low of $44 in West Gray. Congratulations, Mayor Robinson. I wish we could do the same. We're at 186 and South Gate is at 231. And of course, so you know, I, my question is just, these are, this is going to have a huge impacts on local taxation and, and potential increases to, to some of the local municipalities who are doing this in a very efficient manner. And I think overall in Gray County, we're doing it quite efficiently as our costs are half a Simcoe. So given the fact that that was under emerging projects and now there's this correspondence, I'd just like some clarity of, is this under serious consideration or are we just kind of talking around the edge of it?
So I guess I can speak to it. Start, I mean, the very last, therefore be it resolved, that council, municipality of Meaford hereby request that the county at Gray consider the merits of, of the delivery of waste collection and disposal systems at the county level in accordance to the Gray County collaborative decision-making framework. I don't know, Heather or Madam CEO, if you want to speak to that, I was going to say it was a number of years back, there was that framework put in play. Do you want to speak to that, Madam Cook?
I think the CIO.
Okay, I'll go to the CIO. I just said, I didn't see her. Okay, go ahead, Madam CEO.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So back in 2013, the county adopted the county local municipal collaboration framework that outlines how a model for considering the merits, or lack thereof, of delivering a new service or a new collaborative engagement with neighboring counties or local municipalities. And it lays out a whole process that the county was to undertake in order to bring together all of the information that, that council would require in order to make a decision on something like this. One of the first steps is that there needs to be more than one municipality who's expressed an interest. And I think that we have not received, I don't think to this date, am I correct, Heather? I don't think that anyone else at this point in time has indicated that they too wish to see the council consider county-level solid waste management program. Is that correct?
That's correct. We haven't received anything from any other municipality at this point.
Right. So the reason why it was part of the priority setting discussion last week was simply because we were aware that this correspondence had been received from, from Meaford. And just in being transparent, wanted everyone to know that this was, was something that, that had come to our attention. But there isn't anything more of this than, than that at this point in time. Should you, should we receive another request from another municipality? I think the appropriate thing for me to do would be to bring back this 2013 report and review with all of council what the steps are in that collaborative framework, because of course it's long outside the term of this council and it probably would be helpful for everyone to refresh their memory.
So does that help, councilor, whoever?
Yes, thank you, Madam CIO. Could you, could you send me that framework?
Absolutely, yep.
So that I can be familiar?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just as an example, I think, and correct me if I was wrong, I'm wrong, Madam Clerk. The one that I remember went through that process was countywide libraries.
Correct.
And that went through, there's a whole process that it goes through.
Yes.
Do you have anything else, councilor, whoever? Because then there's a whole list of people.
No, that was, that was my question.
Do you have the, the list here of all the ones who want to speak, Madam Clerk? They're popping up all over the place.
They are. I have Counselor Millen, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Body, Counselor Mackey.
Thank you. Okay, start off with Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The same motion, of course, was circulated to all of the municipalities in Gray. So it came to Southgate yesterday. I made the same comment I'm going to make now that there was a study done, and I think it was about a million dollar study done back in, I'm going to say, the late 70s and it's probably sitting on a shelf or maybe it's been shredded by now, I don't know. And it showed that it was going to be way too expensive and there was no support for going forward with it. So if anybody can find that report, read through it and then decide whether you want a countywide waste management system. I'm gonna guess that the answer might be no. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, thanks for that little bit of history because that maybe helped a little bit as well. Okay, then Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, yes, that correspondence was circulated and was on our agenda for West Gray Council. It still needs to be further discussed and a consideration at, at the, at the council level for it. But we, as a West Gray Council, will be forwarding correspondence to Gray County Council with regard to this matter, once West Gray Council has fully assessed the request. And thank you for Meaford for doing the outreach on this particular item.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that, Counselor Robinson. Next, Counselor Body.
Yeah, thanks. We reviewed this at our Gong Show on Monday and I'm pretty sure Counselor Dodd moved that we support the, the letter from Meaford and have the county look at it. Our letter will be coming soon. There, there may have been a report done back in 1952, however, with all the changes that are coming at us for, for garbage. You know, there hasn't been a new dump opened or landfill, I guess would be better term, opened in Ontario apparently in 18 years, 20 years, something like that. We know we're going to get pushed for organics by the province that we're going to have to come together. I keep saying it. We've got a biodigester just outside of Onin South that's being shared, shared with costs being shared by Chatsworth and Georgian Bluffs. And it makes sense to take advantage of that, but they're never going to break even unless they get enough food to put into it a day that's going to have to come from all over the, the county. So we need to start looking forward before the province or the federal government jams it down our throats and then we're, we're panicking to try and move forward. So I think this is something that we've got to look at for all of us. And I think Meaford, Shirley, you can maybe reply, but I understand your landfill contract or your garbage pickup contract has gone up something like 48%, which is nuts. That means that it's coming our way next. It's going to Georgian Bluffs that use the, the same carrier shortly after that. And you know, maybe if your municipality runs their own service, you're going to be bulletproof, but some of us aren't going to be. And I think we've got to start thinking about this proactively in advance. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Body. And next, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. And Counselor Body touched on it. I just wanted to mention that Georgian Bluffs and Chatsworth do have the biodigester and through a lot of experimentation, we've, we've learned that the best material for the biodigester is source separated organics. And, you know, it is going to be a push by the, the province up the road to, to get rid of source separate organics in our landfills to reduce the methane. So there is an opportunity for, you know, the region, I think, to utilize the biodigester. The, the long and the short of it right now is that our two municipalities don't have the financing available to take it to the next level. So there would have to be interest, in my opinion, from other member municipalities that want to source out a spot for their source separate organics for that facility to really have the impact on our area that it, it should be having. So anyways, I throw that out. And this is a difficult subject because there's those of us that are blessed to have landfills and there's others that aren't. But, you know, it's certainly a resource that is, is quite valuable for those that have it. And I'm not sure how it would work on a countywide system, how, how the payments would go back and forth, but I certainly, you know, recognize the, the issue. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think I see any, you got another listener, Madam Clerk?
Just Counselor, whoever, has a follow-up.
Okay, Counselor, whoever.
A couple of things. Certainly, there, there's, it's a complex issue because a lot with the individual municipality having assets, for instance, ours are on the books for 4.3 million, but we also have an unfunded liability of about 5.5 million for landfill closure. So we're, you know, how do we distribute that and amongst all our, our neighbors when we, we put those assets into the, the larger pot? So certainly is complicated. When I was trying to look up the various costs of the various landfills that, which I talked about earlier, I forgot to mention that those are 2018 costs because we have three municipalities in Gray County that haven't yet filed their 2019 financial information reporting forms. And so we do use that in our budget presentation here also in the town of Blue Mountain. So hopefully those will be available soon.
Okay, thank you, Counselors, whoever. So everybody is understanding that there is a process. And just as a slight little comment, Counselor Millen, when was it that time when Gray County had a tour of Simcoe County? I think you drove the bus. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do. I'm gonna say that was in 2011, 12, somewhere in there. Maybe it was in the winter, I know that. And I remember the young lady that we spoke to or spoke to us, she had looked at the cart system and she said, that'll never work in the wintertime. And I had to correct her and said, yeah, we've been using it in Southgate for a number of years now and it does work in the wintertime. You just got to make sure your snowplow operators know what the bin looks like and go around it instead of just winging it into the field. But once you get past that hurdle, it works great.
I take it that's part of your training of new snowplow operators?
While I got, while I'm here, Mr. Warden, if I might, I would suggest, there was a comment about some municipalities are bulletproof and others aren't. Well, some municipalities are bulletproof because they invested in their, their waste management systems a number of years ago. And they're paying the price now, but they've got a beautiful system and it's working great. I'm just saying that for a friend. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Warden, I do have Counselor O'Leary and Counselor Keveney. I just want to remind council, we're just focusing on the request from Meaford to be received for information.
Okay, thank you for that clarity, Madam Clerk. And Counselor Leary, it's, go ahead. Well, that might cancel my question then, because I, I wanted to ask Counselor Mackey, is the biodigester a real possibility? And what do you mean by getting to the next level? Can you elaborate on that?
I'm not sure if Madam Clerk wants me to elaborate on that or not. But quickly I will. The next step would be developing a, a transfer station there and a way to, to de-bag the source separated organics. So we, there's a, and I don't know the figure off the top of my head. I think it's around a three, a $3 million investment would be needed on that site. And primarily for the de-bagging, you know, station is my, just off the top of my head, Brian. But we, we do have all the reports and actually currently we've got an RFP out, Georgian Bluffs and ourselves to have a third-party, you know, engineer review the entire site. So including the biodigester and the lagoon to give us the potential options moving forward. So stay tuned.
Thank you. And probably Scott, those that have entered it, probably at a certain time, you could offer a tour or other counselors to, to view that site?
I'm sure Georgian Bluffs and Chatsworth would.
I'm sure Georgian Bluffs and Chatsworth would welcome any members of council that wanted to tour the facility.
Okay, thank you. I think I have Counselor Keveny next. Is that right, Madam?
And then Counselor Columbus.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Shirley.
Thanks very much, Mr. Warden. And I, yes, I see that Mayor Columbus wishes to speak. So, I'll just take the opportunity to thank Counselors, whoever, and all of County Council for their comments. And yes, you were absolutely right. The huge increase that was presented to Meaford in our latest contract negotiations is the reason for this motion coming to County Council and just looking for, as it suggests, the opportunity to explore the potential, which may turn out to be even more expensive, but we just thought it was worth making the recommendation to at least look at it. So, just thanks, everybody, for your comments.
Thanks, Counselor Keveny. And Counselor Columbus, welcome.
Thank you, and thanks so much. I did put my request in for a comment some time ago, but seems to have missed. So, surely, you took the words out of my mouth. So, I just wanted to thank everyone for your comments. This was something that came as quite a shock to us at our council meeting on Monday, with the 30% increase in our waste management contract. And perhaps one of the ones that was, I'm hearing a whole lot of comment about, was that we did have a program to collect and recycle film plastic, and that has been eliminated. So, that 30% increase has, does not even include that film plastic recycling, which has caused a real problem, because we were very proud of that particular program. And so, it really sparked the thought that, you know, that we do have a successful compost recycling and would like to use the local biodigester. So, it seemed to be an opportunity to have a look at this from a county perspective, to see who else would be interested. And I guess in terms of this appearing on county's agenda today was a question of timing, because we had distributed the information to all of the other, all of our colleagues in the lower tiers. And some, as we've seen, have gone through, had a chance to bring it to their councils, others have not. And so, there may be some interest going on. But I appreciate everyone's comments. Certainly, it is a thorny issue if we, in terms of increased expense. We would hope that this is going to, it could be shared and reduce the cost. But we all know that this is a big issue that is going to be coming with costs increasing from producers, for example, for packaging and so on. I think it is something that maybe bears a closer scrutiny. Thanks to everyone for your comments. Really appreciate the time.
Thanks for those thoughtful comments, Counselor Columbus. Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any further comments out there? So, basically, this is to receive, and basically, if there's a process, then that takes a separate process.
That is correct, yes.
All right, seeing as there's no other comments, has been moved. Anybody opposed to receiving this? Okay, that is carried. So, then, other business. I think this is going over to Madam C O., update on the gray transit ridership.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I actually have two items for you, council. I'm very conscious of the time, and I'll try to make this as brief as possible. I do need to share my screen. Here. One moment. Okay. So, council had asked at the strategic planning session for an opportunity to find out a little bit more about what's been happening with the transit system since we launched the first route just over a month ago. So, those numbers are on your screen, and you can see the routes. And you'll see that they had a staggered start. The first route being launched was the Owen Sound to Dundalk leg, as well as Dundalk to Orangeville. And then, a little over a week later, the Highway 26 route. And then, after that, Owen Sound to Wyerton, and then finally, the Flesherton to Walkerton route, which has only started very recently. So, not surprisingly, given our experience with the earlier limited transit system that we worked with along Highway 10, the numbers are low, but they are trending in the right direction. We've undertaken a very, very limited marketing at the very beginning. There are a number of reasons for that. We wanted to confirm the stops and the timing and get the best sense of what is actually going to work with people's schedules and with their demand. And so, we didn't want to get into a whole lot of publishing information about schedules and everything, only to have to turn around and change it. Also, unfortunately, Stephanie, our manager, had to be away for a little while, and so, we were without her wonderful services. We've also had, you know, there's contractual issues and insurance matters that we've also had to work through during this time, but I think we've put the bulk of that behind us. There are two things, though, I wanted to bring to your attention, and this will come forward again in a more fulsome report. One is about the accessibility. Right now, the vans that we're operating, if someone came to us with a walker, we could accommodate that. But these vans are not truly wheelchair-accessible. They don't have lifts. And we've heard from two different people who are quite upset about that. Our commitment from the beginning had been to link folks up with either HCSS or SMART if they needed a truly accessible ride. In one case, for sure, that person was not happy with that alternative, because they wanted a way to be able to travel with their whole family. And that's not an option with HCSS and SMART. Their rides are limited to the people that require the service, because they have a disability and perhaps a caregiver of some kind. So, I'm just wanting you to be aware that these questions continue to arise. We are working with driver's seat, and as we had committed to you earlier, we'll be looking at a report back to council no later than January about next steps around this. And we did already quote, I think, to council in the September report, the costs that would come with having to change out the vehicles. The other thing that we've encountered, just so you're aware, some of the other municipalities that we're working with, where their bus stops are charging us quite a significant amount of money to maintain them in the wintertime. One in particular wishes to charge us $50 every time they have to put salt or sand down. And should there be more than 50 millimeters of snow, they will charge us $375 to clear the snow away from the bus stop. So, we'll be looking into that. And so, when I say we're still trying to determine exactly where we want stops to be and everything, some of these unanticipated expenses, if they can't be negotiated down, I don't know. We may have to look at another arrangement for where the stops are, so that we could contract our own services to clear the snow. So, I'm happy to take any questions about that.
Okay, thank you, Madam C O. Any questions, clarity, or just general information for anyone?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Madam C O.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Okay, the second item that I wanted to bring forward today, as councils are aware, on October 11th, there was a tragic accident between a motor vehicle and a buggy on the Gray Bruce line. And first of all, I just wanted to say, I think everybody in Gray County wants to extend their sympathy to that family and to the Amish and Mennonite community for the terrible loss. On that Monday after it happened, I reached out to my colleague, C O., in Bruce County to talk to Sandra about some things that we might want to do or think about in response to this. And because both of our paramedic services are involved and impacted by these situations. In this particular example, Bruce and Gray Paramedic Services sent six ambulances and two supervisor units, as well as the Elmwood Fire Department, to respond, because there were 10 patients there. This is the third accident like this that's happened, I think, in recent memory. And it's just, it's so hard on our staff, all of them, not to mention the people that are affected. And the neck, I just wanted you to be aware that the Director of Paramedic Services from Bruce County has reached out to Bill Walker and asked that consideration be given to amendments to the Highway Traffic Act. In this particular case, it's my understanding that that buggy wasn't lit. And at the dusk time, it's so hard for people to be able to see. And as we all know, the more space you have, if a vehicle is lit, you can see it, and that gives you time to react. So, what Bruce County has asked of Mr. Walker is that the Highway Traffic Act make it illegal for buggies to travel on roadways after dusk without white lights on the front and rear-facing red taillights. They also wondered about a blinking amber light as well. So, that's something that has been brought to the province's attention through our M P P, Mr. Walker. And I just wanted you to be aware of that today. That's all.
Okay, thank you for that, Madam C O. I don't know if there's any questions there or any comments?
Yes, Counselor Mackey.
Go ahead, Counselor Mackey.
Well, thank you. And it certainly, you know, was a tragedy. But I would applaud any steps that could be taken in the changes to the Highway Traffic Act. You know, in our municipality, we have a large segment of older order Amish. And there've been numerous discussions, you know, with that group around the illumination of their buggies. Because they're old order, they, you know, they have a strip of fluorescent, but it doesn't shine very bright. And they may have a candle that doesn't shine very bright. So, certainly, lots of near misses, you know, throughout the area, but in particular, our municipality. And we can't get them to put smoke alarms in their houses either. There needs to be some changes, though, for their protection. But certainly, you know, it makes a lot of sense that the Highway Traffic Act be amended for everyone's safety and that further illumination be put on these buggies. Thank you.
Thanks for that information. Kim, do you have any follow-up on that, or?
Just to add that I did share, both with our own Transportation Department and with Bruce County, Ohio and Pennsylvania, that both have large communities of Amish and Mennonite. Ohio State University has done a lot of research into this. And so, there are other places that we can look to that may have grappled with this very issue in the past. And I think we can learn a lot from their experience.
Right. And I don't see Brian gamble on here, but I know he's the president of the Gray County Farm Safety Association. And I know we've, at our meetings over the years, have talked about trying to improve the safety around Mennonite equipment and buggies and everything else. So, it's a constant education and moving forward, for sure. Okay, any further comments or questions there from County Council? Yeah, very disheartening. Your children. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, it's Brian. We had a hydroge here, and my picture doesn't come back up, but I am here.
Okay. I didn't say you weren't.
No, you didn't.
Go ahead. Oh, did you have a comment, Brian, as the president?
Yeah, just to back up, I have had discussion with the Amish people here, close to me. They're my neighbors. Young people are very receptive to it, and they would like to make progress on it. But, of course, the bishops are shutting them down. And, you know, I've told them, I go personally, myself, to Shipshewana, Indiana, and the whole town is Amish, and there isn't an issue. Every buggy is lit and flashes. It's not that it can't be done. It's just, you know, an issue that they can't get around. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that update, Brian. I knew you had had some conversations about that in the past. Okay, so, there's no other further comments there. Madam Clerk, do we get a motion to receive the information?
No, no, but I do, under other business, I just want to remind council, you will have gotten an invite from Rob Hatton regarding the County Council public meeting this afternoon at 2:00 regarding development charges.
Okay, thanks for that, Madam Clerk. And we're going to wrap things up here really quickly, so everybody has a chance to have lunch before we get into that. Are there any notice of motions to provide County Council with today for an upcoming meeting?
I see Counselor Desai's hand.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Desai.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. You will be familiar with this. I brought this before municipal council last night. The Attorney General of Ontario passed or tabled a legislation on Tuesday, October 20th. For now, it's known as Bill 218. And Schedule 2 of Bill 218 deals with amendments to the Municipal Act. And I wanted council to discuss that and possibly take a position on that. So, I'll give notice motion on that for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so, just to tease that, you're looking at making comments or creating a position from the county? Is that what you're, just of your notice motion?
So, thank you, Mr. Warden. So, ideally, I'd like for County Council to take a position on it. It has fairly sweeping changes, the biggest one, of course, being the fact that it bars municipalities from having ranked ballots going forward. And, yeah, so, I'd like for County Council to discuss that at the very least, and hopefully, have a position on it at the end of the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other notice of motions from, notice of motion from County Council? Okay, hearing none. Well, I have it moved by Counselor O'Leary and Counselor Desai that we adjourn. I guess there's nobody opposed to that. I would say that's probably Carrie. All right, everyone, have a